... City Council Meeting for Tuesday, February 16th, 2016. If you would please rise and join us for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you could please call the roll.
Councilmember Clint.
Here.
Councilmember Manning.
Here.
Councilmember Demmer.
Here.
Councilmember Geisler.
Here.
Councilmember Johnson.
Here.
Councilmember Wells.
Here.
Mayor Cook.
Here.
Thank you. The first item on our agenda this evening is to adopt the agenda. Councilor Manning.
Yeah. I move adoption of the agenda adding, under the proclamation presentation part, a presentation by Mark Uglum.
All right.
Second.
Motion by Manning with a second by Geisler, adding Representative Mark Uglum to the agenda. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion carries. And suddenly we're at proclamations and presentations. Representative Uglum.
Well, thank. Whenever you say there, boss. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I'm Mark Uglum, State Representative for 36A, and it's my honor to represent part of Coon Rapids and Champlin in the state legislature. And I just wanted to come by this evening and chat a little bit and give you a little update because the session is nearly upon us. This is going to be a very unusual session this year. It starts March 8th and will end the week before Memorial Day. It's an extremely short session, and there's a lot of work, a lot of work to be done. It's unusual because last session, we ended, and we, both houses, the House and the Senate, got hung up on a couple of things, like politics is prone to do sometimes. And we did not pass a comprehensive transportation bill, and I'll get into that a little bit and the implications for Coon Rapids, a comprehensive tax bill. And of course, this session is normally reserved for just bonding, and we have a monster bonding bill that we have to consider. So we have three major bills as well as a supplemental budget to pass in extremely short time. Now, people might wonder why such a short session, and if you have happened to driven by the state Capitol, you can see it's completely under construction. And in this case, this session, our House chambers are going to be done, with the exception of the fact that there will be no bathrooms. I'm not kidding. And so we'll be using the proverbial porta-potties that are outside. I'm hoping that maybe they put heat in them. But it's really that way over there. And the Senate will be meeting in their new office building. They will not be meeting in their chambers because that is completely torn apart. We passed, I forget how many hundred million dollars it was, to rebuild the Capitol, and that's an ongoing project. You basically have to do that when the roof is leaking in on you, and some of the beautiful granite and all the infrastructure was really in total disrepair.
Can I ask you a question?
Mr. Mayor, sir.
So Representative Uglum, you have three bills that you've authored that are really significant to Coon Rapids, if I'm counting right.
Yes.
One is our TIF extension, and I believe that's...
That's in the tax bill at this point in time.
And the other is the third lanes on Highway 10. Those will be in the transportation...
Yes, they're in the tra... Well, let me take it for you one at a time, okay?
Okay, perfect.
The tax bill, right now, is in conference committee between the Senate and the House, okay? Normally, what that means is, at the end of last session, both the Senate and the House passed the tax bill. Now, your TIF extension is in the tax bill. So both the Senate and House passed it, different versions. The House version has the TIF in it, and I believe the Senate version does too. So that's there, but the rest of the bill has to be reconciled. It comes back to both houses, and we vote on it. The transportation bill, same way. Highly unusual, but the transportation bill is in committee that way, in the conference committee. And both houses passed it at the end of last session, but we got hung up on, the mayor or the governor, the governor. The governor wouldn't sign, wouldn't cede to the bill that both the Senate and the House passed because he wanted his gas tax. And the Senate and the House both declined to do that. So we are starting over. Now, as far as the lanes, the third lanes on Highway 10, Representative Newton introduced that bill some time ago, and I've introduced it the last two sessions. That, we're hopeful, will be rolled into what we call the corridors of commerce provisions in the transportation bill. And there is some difference in the amounts of money that the Senate and the House have devoted to corridors of commerce. We're hoping we can leverage that money. We don't earmark projects, at least the two chairs will not do that this time around. So we're not earmarking projects, but we're writing the corridors of commerce bill or the definition of corridors of commerce, so Highway 10 qualifies. Not only the third lane through town here, but west of Anoka also. So we're very hopeful that with a robust transportation bill, there will be money under the corridors of commerce part for this. And, Mr. Mayor, you've been over there, myself, we've had numerous delegations at the Commissioner of Transportation's office pushing these things. So we're in the forefront of this.
And the third bill, of course, is the John Piper Bridge.
The John Piper...
Over the railroad tracks.
And we're not calling it the John Piper Memorial Bridge either.
No, 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 certainly not. And that's, if I understand it correctly, that ended up in the Governor's jobs bill or something, or...
No, no, that's... That is in the bonding bill, not the transportation bill. It's in the bonding bill, and John and I have had numerous conversations about this. And probably the best thing that ever happened was when we had the governor up here, that, what was it, two summers ago now?
During the last...
Yeah, a year ago. And he was very impressed with our dilemma on Hanson and the bridge. But we have that in the bonding bill, and it's in the Governor's bonding bill. This gets a little complicated, really. I mean...
Give us the Reader's Digest version. All these people are waiting for public hearing.
Yes, we have. We have the Governor's bonding bill it's in, the House bonding bill, and the Senate bonding bill. So my point is, it's about as perfect as it can get in the bonding bill. So those are the major items that concern Coon Rapids. I think we're pretty well set up on that. I'm on the bonding committee, I'm on a transportation committee, I'll be riding herd on these bills as much as we possibly can. It's my great hope that it doesn't end up like last session where everything is the last day or two, because things happen in the middle of the night, and it's not a good way to run an organization. But we're hoping that we can pass these bills out, and it'll be beneficial for Coon Rapids. Did you have any questions?
I think I got all mine answered. Anybody else?
Yeah. Well, I'm available at any time, of course, and it's really been a pleasure working with all of you here on the council and all the constituents here in Coon Rapids, and we're hopeful that we can deliver for you this time around.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Representative Uglum, thank you very much.
You bet.
All right. Next thing on our agenda is to approve the minutes of February 2nd.
So moved, second.
Motion by Wells, second by Johnson, to approve the minutes. I assume that one little name will get changed. Excellent. Any discussion or corrections? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And those minutes are approved. Now, we are on to our consent agenda. First item on our consent agenda is to authorize the purchase of a jetter slash camera truck. And our 2016 sewer fund budget includes $256,000 to replace the existing truck. And basically, all this is seeking is permission to not trade it in to try and auction it off, correct?
Mr. Mayor, that's a piece of it. I believe we're required on expenditures over $100,000 to bring it back to council. So even though it's budgeted, we have a trade-in value, we're going to try to sell it for more. If we're unsuccessful, this is, you know, worst-case scenario. So it's a requirement that we bring all purchases or all expenditures greater than $100,000.
And Mr. Himmer, this is the one that we use for inspecting and videoing our sewer lines and such.
Sanitary sewer lines, that's correct.
Sanitary sewer lines.
Yep.
Thank you. So we're looking at authorizing the purchase of a new jetter camera sewer truck, unit number 215, and allow for the trade-in or auction of the existing jet truck. Next item on the consent agenda is to receive the 2015 year-end gambling expenditure report. And if anybody's ever interested, you can go into the packet and look at all of the various groups in town that sell pull tabs and have various fundraisers, and then the other reports are in here. Resolution number four is amending the 2016 budget for the purchase of a replacement police vehicle. Chief Wise, we burned one down. Is that what happened?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, there was a electrical short in the trunk. Those, like we've talked in the past, they're very high-tech vehicles now, and it has more than one battery, and one of the batteries in the trunk had a very unusual short in it, and it caused a fire. Thankfully, nobody was injured, nobody's in the car at the time, so...
You saved the computer.
But quite a scare for us, yeah. Yeah, quite a scare.
I'd gotten a message that one of our squad cars had burned up, and I thought, oh, I think somebody would have told me about that.
Yeah.
It's on here. So we're looking at amending, let's see, authorizing RS 16-32, amending the 2016 insurance fund budget for the purchase of a new squad vehicle to replace the existing unit P6 and new equipment and accessories to set up the vehicle for police use. Item five, also on the consent agenda, is to receive the gambling report and authorized payment to Community Strength Foundation. Item six is to authorize application for the Coon Creek watershed grant, and this is something through our recycling department. They're looking at applying for a water conservation grant from the Coon Creek watershed, monitoring water usage, this is for in-ground sprinklers, right, monitoring the usage. We have a very, an expense to the city of $1,150, and the grant would be...
$1,000.
$1,000, thank you. Oh, yeah. Approve the request to apply for a $1,000 grant from the Coon Creek watershed district for your water conservation pilot program. Thank you. And then the last item on our consent agenda is to adopt resolution 16-31, accepting the 2016 SCORE grant from Anoka County. And this is again for our recycling program. And that is all the items on the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilor Johnson.
I'll move adoption of the consent agenda.
Motion by Johnson, second by Demmer. Any discussion or questions? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion carries. Mr. Himmer, do you want to, or Mr. Hanson, do you want to do the presentation, and then we'll go through all these public hearings? So I understand you're going to do this kind of one overview, and then we're going to go project by project for the public hearings.
Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, rather than repeating a lot of the same information over the course of four separate presentations, we'll do everything that's similar to the, all the projects right up front, and then we'll go into each project, allow you to hold the public hearing after we get through each reconstruction project, and then we'll move on to the next.
Thank you.
So just a little bit of background on the streets that we're proposing to reconstruct this year. All of them have been raided in below fair or poor condition. They range from 26 to 46 years old. Staff has reviewed the condition of the pavement, curb and gutter, sidewalk, driveway aprons, storm sewer, sanitary sewer, and water main on all of the proposed areas for reconstruction. The proposed schedule for all of the different projects, November 17, 2015, council accepted the feasibility report, ordered the public hearing. On December 8, or 2nd and 8, 2015, we held the first neighborhood meeting for all the different property owners in the reconstruction areas. On January 14th and 20th this year, we held a second neighborhood meeting for all the property owners. And then last week, on February 10th and 11th, we held business-specific open houses on our 16-1 and our 16-4 projects, where we went out to Lexington Manufacturing along Zeon Street and spent the afternoon there in one of their conference rooms, answering questions from the neighboring businesses. One thing I should note about both of these open house meetings for the businesses is we also invited the properties that are not being assessed, so all of the adjacent side-street businesses that may not have been informed previously via an open house letter were notified. So we did that last week. Then tonight, February 16th, is the public hearing, and the ordering of the plans and the specs. On April 19th, we anticipate adopting the assessments and awarding contracts for construction. And then from May to October, generally, will be the construction. Of course, we'll get more specific information out to all the property owners, exactly what those timeframes are once we get a contractor hired this spring for each of the projects. Estimated project costs, you can see that they're funded by a number of sources, primarily municipal state aid funds, there's some funding from our street reconstruction fund, stormwater utility fund, water system maintenance fund, sanitary sewer fund, sidewalk construction, and then special assessments, which make up about 20% or less of the total construction project budget or cost. The totals for 16-1 is approximately 6.8 million. Project 16-2 is 6.6 million. 16-3 is 2.8 million, and then 16-4 is 4.3 million. The proposed assessment rates, as were, was defined in the feasibility reports that were approved on November 17th last year and have been communicated to property owners, are $1,835.45 for a single-family resident. Multi-family or duplex townhome apartment properties are at $22.94 per front foot. Commercial properties essentially double that at $45.88 per foot, and then industrial properties are $59.64 a front foot. The terms of the assessment, the payback term is over 10 years at 3.06%, unless the assessment is less than $500. And the payback term is three years or 1.77%. Just a quick note, that notice was provided to property owners that no one may challenge a special assessment unless they sign a written objection, file it with the city clerk prior to the assessment hearing, or with the council at tonight's meeting. We've got several objections, and I'll go through those as we get to each project. One objection on 16-2, and then two objections for 16-3 and 4, so far. The payment for the proposed assessments, property owners have several options. The first option is, once the assessment is adopted on April 19th, then from April 20th to May 20th, there's a 30-day interest-free period that they can pay the assessment off. The second option would be to pay the assessment between May and mid-November, November 14th of this year, plus the interest that's accrued. And then the third option is really, literally, do nothing, and then it will just roll onto your tax bill and be paid over 10 years that way. Just a note about construction information, property owners, like I said, will receive another mailing with a lot more detail about the schedule, exactly what's going to be happening, frequently asked questions, information on caring for their new grass seed and watering for that. We will be providing weekly construction updates throughout the summer. Those will be available on our website. And then property owners can sign up, and over the course of our open houses and our business meetings, we've been collecting emails from people so that we can sign them up so that they can receive a notification when the website is updated as far as what is anticipated to happen the upcoming week for construction activity. So the first project is the Evergreen Boulevard Industrial Park area. That project is from 85th Avenue north to the cul-de-sac, and then it also includes 90th Avenue from Evergreen Boulevard to Springbrook Drive, as well as 93rd Avenue from Evergreen Boulevard to Coon Rapids Boulevard. And some specifics about what that project includes, we're proposing to remove the raised median, for the most part, the entire project corridor, replace that with a continuous left turn lane. There will be short stretches of median that we will put back in at 85th Avenue, as well as 93rd, just for safety and channelization of traffic at those two intersections. But for the most part, the median will be gone, and we'll replace with that continuous turn lane, as I said. Replacing the water main on Evergreen Boulevard from 85th Avenue up to 93rd Avenue, and then on 90th Avenue from Evergreen Boulevard to Springbrook Drive. There's a short 200, 300-foot stretch of water main on the very north part of Evergreen that we also have to replace. Any water main in the corridor that we're not replacing was previously lined a couple years ago under a separate project, so that's okay. Even the valves and the hydrants are good, we don't have to do anything with that stuff. We're also proposing to construct a five-foot wide concrete sidewalk on the west side of Evergreen Boulevard. The project itself will include complete construction of the pavement section, resurfacing, replacement of all the damaged curb and gutter, driveway panels, repair of storm sewer and sanitary manholes. With the median removal, we're also going to propose to push that curb line that's on the west side of Evergreen 16 feet to the east, to the east, and therefore narrow up the road a little bit, but it will still be certainly wide enough to accommodate the businesses and the trucks that are out there. This graphic represents what the typical section would look like for the street. So currently, it's a through lane in each direction with the median turn lanes, and then there's a shoulder. We'd put back a 16-foot wide continuous left turn lane, two 14-foot wide through lanes, and then two foot, or two six-foot shoulders on each side. And then the west side, like I said, would have a sidewalk. It'll have a five-foot grassed boulevard there. So at this point, I'd like to turn it over to you to hold the public hearing. To my knowledge, I haven't received any objections for this particular project.
And this one, you had an open house last week, the Evergreen.
Yeah, we had that at Magnum Trucking.
Did that many people stop by, or...
Yeah, yeah. I'd say we had about 12 to 14 different business representatives there, and we haven't gotten contact info from everybody yet. So our next step is to go out again and flyer everybody and talk to people and get their contact info so we have it and can give them all the information that they need before the project starts.
Okay, excellent. All right. So then the first thing we're going to do is on project 16-1 sub 6A, which is the, or 16-1 Evergreen Boulevard, we are going to hold the public hearing and the assessment hearing. Is anybody here to speak to council for the public hearing for the Evergreen project, Public hearing is open. Anybody here for the, all right, that will close the public hearing. And...
Mr. Mayor.
Councilor Johnson.
Because this is in my ward, and also because I appreciate how staff has designed this to increase access and frankly, remove some medians along this way, I'm going to move adoption of resolution number 16-1, parent 6A, ordering the improvement where we need a supermajority vote. And so do you want to take that as a separate vote?
We take it separately, thank you.
Okay, very well.
Second.
Motion by Johnson, second by Geisler, to adopt resolution number 16-1 sub 6A, ordering the improvement. Discussion? Councilor Demmer.
Just one question. So when this road was built, it didn't have a trucking facility on it. Well, I don't know, maybe it had won the potato chip guys, but now it has a pretty major trucking facility. The upgrades you're putting in place allow it to last a substantial time, even with the increased traffic weight?
Yes.
Great.
Yep, yep.
Hope that wasn't too technical for you.
Engineer speak me.
Tim and I have a goal, not to ever be back there in the course of our careers, doing anything with that road.
Okay. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And I think we have our supermajority.
And, Mr. Mayor.
Councilor Johnson.
I would also move adoption of resolution 16-1, parent A, approving plans and specifications and ordering advertisement for bids.
Second.
Motion by Johnson, second by Geisler. Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion carries.
All right. Our next street reconstruction project is 16-2 Mississippi Boulevard, and that is Mississippi Boulevard from Hanson Boulevard to Coon Rapids Boulevard. Includes resurfacing of the road, replacement of damaged curb and gutter and driveway panels, repair of storm sewer and sanitary manholes, the replacement of water main along the entire length of the corridor from Hanson to just north of 111th Avenue. And then one note is that those that live along the corridor know that we sent a letter collecting some feedback regarding a proposed on-street bike trail, and I'll talk a little bit more about that in a second. Just a note about schedule for Mississippi Boulevard. Obviously, we have the 4th of July parade in the area, so that's a big concern and how we're going to work around that. So our plan is to start at Hanson and work towards Zavas Street, basically start as soon as we can, but likely in the first or second week of May. No work will happen anywhere west of Zavas Street. The road will essentially be open to local traffic through there. People will still be able to get through, but we'll prefer to detour people around there, bring them up Zavas Street so that they're not going through the construction zone, at least on the eastern half of the project. That'll take place before 4th of July. And then after that, we're going to move over to where the college is and try to take advantage of some of the downtime. The school, the college is in session all year long, of course, but the traffic of the students is much less in the summer, so we'll try to get that all taken care of by the college in those summer months of July and August, and then move down towards the middle section and work through that area.
Just one clarification, we're not starting on that road simply because of the parade. We're going to have tens of thousands of cars to get out of there after the 4th of July fireworks.
Yes.
So that's the other reason for leaving it open to Zavas.
Yes. Oh, yeah, yeah, absolutely. A note about the trail pole. So we requested feedback from residents about an on-street bicycle trail that we kind of described as a multipurpose trail. In our initial thoughts, it would be bidirectional on one side of the street, the riverside. And of the letters that we sent out, we got about a 12% feedback, which isn't a whole lot of people on a corridor of about 150 homes or so. Of those comments about... Of those comments about sixty-three percent were, were negative or were against either the, the on-street trail or no parking, primarily no parking. And then thirty-seven percent in favor or had somewhat of a mixed reaction or no reaction at all. So we looked at a number of different ways that we could kinda bring that, that bicycle aspect into the corridor a little bit more pronounced, but still address people's concerns about taking away parking in order to do it on one side of the street. Worked with MINDOT quite a bit last week and came up with an option that's, we call it the wide outside lane option, where, where if we were to reduce the parking lanes from ten-foot wide to eight-foot wide, and then make the through lane fourteen feet wide instead of twelve on each side, we could put in what's called a shero. It's a, it's the bike symbol with two arrows on top of it, and still be able to maintain parking on both sides. So, you, it's not a, a true bike lane. We don't have enough room to be able to do that. But, uh, this way allows that bike aspect to stay in the corridor, to be more pronounced and enhanced in the corridor, um, and then allows people to, to continue to park. And the eight-foot parking lane is, is inadequate enough, uh, space for vehicles to continue to park. So this is an option we think is a reasonable compromise, um, to it, and, um, perhaps could look at, at adding some additional enhanced signage for the MRT corridor after the project. But, uh, barring any, um, negative feedback or concern about this proposal, we, I, I would mention though that we did promise the residents along the corridor that we were gonna send another letter out, basically describing kinda what we intend to recommend. So barring any, uh, negative feedback or concerns overwhelming, uh, lead, then that's kinda the, the recommendation that we're anticipating moving forward on, in terms of addressing that.
Johnson, so where do you walk?
Uh, pedestrians would continue to be able to walk where they walk today, which is in the parking lanes. Bikes-
Just had a, a question. I wasn't quite clear, would the, the shero lane be on both sides?
Yes.
Or one?
Yeah, the bikes really need to follow in line with the traffic. So you'd have a shero pointing in one direction on one side and then, they have them in Minneapolis, and, uh, general guidance show, says it should be spaced about two hundred and fifty feet. We'll probably go with like a two hundred foot spacing. And I would note that adding markings like this, I think, um, enhancing the, uh, the bike and the ped aspect along this corridor will help drivers to be more aware of pedestrians and bicycles, which regardless of how people felt about parking or no parking, everybody said that speeding was an issue and needs to be addressed somehow. And I think having the additional markings will help, uh, remind vehicles that there are pedestrians that use that corridor, um, and hopefully help them to remember to slow down.
Yeah.
Counselor Clinton?
My concern is these shero, shero markings, uh, bikers are gonna think, okay, we have a bike lane. It's marked for a bike. We've got a bark, you know, bikeway. We got the right of way. If, if there's accidents or cars come in there and bother those bikers, um, where does the city stand on that? I mean, 'cause this is new. I mean, it's in Minneapolis, I know, and it drives me crazy. I absolutely hate it. It makes no sense. It is the most dangerous thing I've ever seen. And, and one of my concerns is, you know, not so much that, as if I'm biking down there and I see those bike marks, I'm gonna think I've got the right of way. So, where does the city legally stand if something happens and that really isn't a bike lane?
Well, first of all, I mean, that, that has a certain particular meaning, that a biker will have to know that they have to share the road, it's not their own bike path, it's got its own special meaning, so there'll be an education component. From a strictly legal standpoint, I don't see the city having any liability. Now, there may be, like I said, liability between the biker and the driver of the vehicle, but this isn't something that we've made up. This sounds like it comes from the state, the state system. It's used in Minneapolis, so I think what it's gonna ultimately come down to is an educational component for those who haven't seen it before, for both the bikers and the drivers.
Well, how are we gonna educate the people about it?
Uh, we could look at various means, like a city newsletter, maybe there could be some cable, um, segment that we could, we could do. Postings on the website are fine. I mean, of course, uh, you know, per the rules of the road, bikers are supposed to be using that, that through lane. In fact, a number of people were concerned about that when we had proposed the bidirectional system on the one side. You'd have bikers lined up kinda the wrong way that they're supposed to go with the vehicles. And this one, they would follow in line with the vehicles like they would if there were no markings out there today. I think it'll just, uh, give a, uh, enhanced pedestrian component to the corridor and help, I think will help, uh, people, remind people to slow down too, which is something like I pointed out, everybody is concerned about on Mississippi Boulevard.
I'm optimistic that people can figure it out. I mean, when I drive through Minneapolis and St. Paul, it, it gets really busy with, because there's so many little starts and stops and turns. Well, Mississippi Boulevard, it's a pretty long straight stretch, where I don't think we're gonna have that same steep learning curve that you've got in Minneapolis, but I don't know.
It won't have that interior solid lane. We don't have enough room for that, which would make it a designated bike lane. So they'll just be every two hundred feet.
Counselor Demmer, I'm sorry.
So, these are pretty long driveways in, in that area, and, and so reducing the parking width a little doesn't worry me too much. My bigger worry is that, I mean, this really is a, a bike corridor within the city. This is the, the MRT and, and people run and bike on the MRT. If, what I imagine is going to happen is people continue to ride their bike in the parking lane so cars can go around them, but then when they come up to a car, they'll have to dart out around it. And that would be-
No, that, that shouldn't be the case because the, the shero part of it is in the through lane.
Right. But still, you move as far off the road as you can when you're biking or running so that cars can go past you at full speed. Uh, my, my only concern is with a narrower parking lane, are you gonna get more? I guess I don't know for sure. Um, if, if you've done a safety study and it's reasonable, then I, I think it's, it's fine, I just, it, it would be interesting to see, um, maybe drawn out and, and what we actually think is gonna really happen versus what the rules say to have happen.
Yeah, that's something we could, we can provide a plan view representation of what that is supposed to look like.
Counselor Clinton?
That's exactly what I'm talking about. He doesn't know what we mean. It's-
No, I know what the Minneapolis wants to look like.
Oh, no, okay, but so they're not gonna go into the cars? They've got the right now to go completely outside of the parking lane.
But realistically, there won't be that many people parked in the parking spots, not like Minneapolis where it's full.
Right.
So most of the time, people will be in the parking lane.
But that's my point. If somebody's coming down the road driving, there's no cars parked, but that bike is out in this shero lane where it has the right to be. The car is gonna get mad, and then what happens to the biker?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, currently today bikers can bike down the, the lane. We're giving them a wider lane to utilize. And currently today, whether it's an eight-foot parking lane and a twelve-foot lane, or a six-foot parking lane and a fourteen-foot lane, they're out there doing this already and they're able to do this already. So absent widening this road in some capacity, or taking an off-street component, or taking away parking, this is the best solution we've come up with as a compromise to maintain parking to two-way directional bikers that are currently doing this today, just drawing more attention to it. I think from an education component, we could add signage along with the MRT that's already out there, you know, share the road, those types of things. So it, we're not really changing the existing conditions today, other than changing the lanes and making them wider and making the parking a little narrower.
And giving them a, a specific right of way, basically.
But they have that today, Councilmember Clinton. You're able-
No, now they're sharing it. Now they're sharing it with the drivers and the parkers. Now we're giving each car, bike, parking their own designated lanes. And I, I, I guess I'm just-
Counselor Johnson?
I guess that I'd rather have no parking on one side of the street.
Since the first of my, um, five knee surgeries thirty-one years ago, I've been biking along Mississippi Boulevard as I dropped down off the bike trail that's on Coon Rapids Boulevard, and that was my way to get to the dam. And the reality is, is that it is a relatively safe street in the outset. The reality is, is that those bikers that bike on ten speeds and stuff like that, that aren't just for a real casual, slow pace ride down the road, understand the rules of the road, and frankly, they clip along at a pretty good pace, keeping with traffic, and they're out competing with traffic right now. I actually appreciate staff's, um, idea adding this, um, this indication that this is to be considered a bike thoroughfare, uh, because it has always been used that way in the city of Coon Rapids. And so, I'm supportive of this kind of concept. I'd really love to see kind of a plan of the street and how it would lay out, but, um, from my perspective anyway, as somebody who's used it for that long, um, and, and I still bike it, well, not, I wouldn't say today, 'cause it's just too cold for me today. But I, I bike it in the summer. I think this would be an improvement.
Counselor Geisler?
Um, I've lived on this street for over twenty years and drive it every day. And they're just, I mean, you can tell, oh, somebody's having a party, 'cause there are cars parked on the street. But it's not commonplace that there are many, many, many cars parked on the street, on, on Boulevard. They just aren't. It's, and you do have an awful lot of walkers and bikers. I think one of the things that we do well in the city is our parks and our trails, and to encourage and help recognize that this is a bike trail, um, I think is fine. And people, you're always stopping and looking before you come out of your driveway, you're gonna stop for a biker, whether they're, they're today or they're in this bike lane. The bikers still always have right of way whether there's the marking on the pavement or not, so I'm, I don't see it as a safety issue. I think we see it as a, um, acknowledgement of making it greener, you know, we wanna encourage the parks and the trails, and showing that this is a connection in the city.
I have a question. So, with this, um, tonight, are we actually going to be approving this shero, or are we still gonna be seeing an image of it at some point to see how it lays out in the road and how the flow is? I mean, I can kind of imagine it in my head, but-
Well, I think we need to provide you some additional information, um, and then, I guess, parry-
Could I have one question? These shero lanes, will they be on both sides of the road?
Yes, yes, yes they will, yep.
Okay, we can, we can address that in your public, in the public hearing, sir.
Yeah, I did, since you were talking about it. But my question was on both sides or just one side?
Yeah. And I think part of this process is we need to really involve the neighbors again, or at least let them know-
Yeah, we have another letter to get out.
For an open house, this is what we're looking at doing before we say, this is it. I mean, I think, I, I think this makes sense. I've gotten a lot of pushback when we eliminate parking, because although most of the time there's no cars parked there, every weekend in the summer, there's blocks of cars for events at those, at different, different properties there. So, okay. So we should, uh-
I have, uh, one objection that I need to note.
Okay, go ahead.
Um, property owner David Cooter, uh, at one oh two four five Mississippi Boulevard, um, are you here?
Yes.
Um, I don't know, would, would council like to see a copy of the letter? I only have one. I could read it, if you would-
Um, if, will you be speaking, or you wanted me to read it for you?
Well, I was gonna read the letter, or you could read it, doesn't matter.
Okay, we could, so what would you like to do, Mr. Anderson, because he could just address this in public hearing at a place?
Well, I could just go ahead and read the letter. Um, the proposed, uh, "As a homeowner on Mississippi Boulevard in Coon Rapids, I object to the proposed property assessment for this project. The proposed assessment unfairly singles out a select few residents to pay a portion of the cost for a city street that is used by many people, not just the residents that live on it. It discriminates against those who address or address, whose address, address is on Mississippi Boulevard. It is not an exclusive street. It is the public, it is a public roadway within the city and as such should be funded by the city and the public, which means everyone. The city is forcing just a few residents to pay a large assessment whether they want the project or not. This is not right and I do not agree with it. The city of Coon Rapids needs to work within its existing budget to fund this project. If the city has not allocated sufficient funding to cover the entire cost, then the project should not go forward or, at this time, or be scaled back. The city needs to prioritize its projects in order of importance. How can you justify spending tax dollars on a special interest ice arena and then demand money without consent for needed road repair? To me, this is unacceptable. It is a responsibility of the city to spend tax income wisely. Having the need to impose an assessment in order to fund a project shows a lack of foresight and poor financial planning. I've lived on Mississippi Boulevard for the past twenty-one years, and in that time, the street was repaved once. There was no assessment for it then, and there should not be one for it now. I have legitimate objections and constructive, constructive suggestions. I expect a better approach from city officials to avoid assessment prior to implementing this project."
Is that section of the street done within the last twenty-one years?
It was a Millan overlay in about mid-nineties, ninety-five or ninety-six.
Oh, alright.
Yep.
So, and we're at the, we're at the life expectancy of a Millan overlay, then?
Yes.
Actually, we-
And that's, yeah, yeah, yep.
Okay. And, and because this is one of our state aid streets, this is built to a slightly different, um, schedule or thickness than like, uh, like a hundred and third or something, correct?
Yeah, it's about, yeah, it's about twice the, the pavement thickness, which is, translate to about twice the, the surface cost.
So even though the individual assessments are the same as every street in town-
Yep.
-the street is built to a much heavier standard-
Yep.
-because of the extra traffic that it bears.
Yep, that's correct.
Okay, thank you. All right, any other thing from council or anything else, Mr. Anderson, before I open the public hearing?
No.
All right. Um, in the matter of, um, resolution number sixteen dash two, we'll open the public hearing, and this is Mississippi Boulevard from Hanson Boulevard to Coon Rapids Boulevard. And if you've got something that you'd like to address council on during the public hearing, just approach the mic and, uh, give us your name and address and let us know. I'll open the public hearing for the, uh, project sixteen dash two, Mississippi Boulevard Anybody here to address council for that? Yes, sir. If you could just give us your name and address when you get to the mic.
Sure.
Thank you.
My name is Robert Trueland. I live at ten three three five Mississippi Boulevard. I've lived there for forty-two years. I guess, uh, in the January twenty-fifth letter that was sent out, it was just asking for the residents' opinion as to whether there should be, uh, parking band sides erected on Mississippi Boulevard. And I'm a little bit confused with the information that was provided, 'cause I wasn't quite sure what a dedicated, uh, bike lane was. I, I would, I'm kinda confused as to what that represents, a dedicated bike trail. Uh, I guess the thing that I've noticed on Mississippi Boulevard for, for the forty-two years is that the pedestrians walk against the traffic and the bikers go with the traffic on both sides of the street, and there's been no problems that I've noticed. Uh, also, on, on the riverside of the Mississippi Boulevard, I've never noticed any problems of parking. Uh, if you walk down there, uh, there might be a few cases of parking, but normally there's nobody over there, except for maybe some, uh, landscapers or that. They park their trucks out at the residence that they're doing, and they park over there. If they have not, if there's a ban in parking, uh, where are they gonna park those vehicles? Either across the street, uh, Mark suggested when I talked to him that they could park in the people's driveways. Well, I don't think the people's driveways, uh, they won't be able to use them if they've got those landscaping, uh, uh, vehicles in there. So, I really don't understand why there's even a consideration of a ban on parking because there's no problems. I guess the, right now, uh, let me think, is that, uh, through the forty-two years, I haven't noticed any problems with the biking on Mississippi- noticed any problems with the biking on Mississippi or the pedestrians. Now, when you say that there's a dedicated parkway, I was envisioning it, it would be just on one side of the street, on the riverside, that was being proposed.
That was the initial proposal. Now, we're looking at both sides of wide range, through lane, and each side as you described.
Yeah, that was, that was the initial proposal, but because of pushback, because the neighbors didn't want no parking down there, they're coming up with an alternative, they're suggesting an alternative, and we haven't decided on that yet.
Mm-hmm. I guess, I don't see a problem, I don't see any problems with the existing parking on Mississippi Boulevard. So why put a restriction on it if there's no problems with it? Also, in my opinion, we haven't had problems with pedestrian, it's used a lot. And the pedestrians, like I say, go against traffic. The bikes go with traffic on both sides of the street. And the street is fairly wide, and with the white strips that are on there, provides some, a lot of room for, for people on, on the street. And I was just kind of wondering if, are you going to narrow the, the street for the vehicles that are driving on it? And then on the, on the riverside, are you going to make that wider than on the non-riverside? Or is that going to be the same, as far as the, the space for pedestrians and bikes?
And that's, that's what we don't know yet. I mean, we're looking at a proposal, we haven't made a decision on this. I think we're going to have to have another, another open house with the neighbors to, to describe what it is you're proposing. Because you're talking about taking two feet off of each parking lane, and then is the bike, the, the shero only two feet wide then? Or how wide's the shero?
The shero is forty inches wide, so it's a little over three feet wide. That would be entirely contained within the through lane, which would be fourteen feet wide instead of twelve feet wide, as it is today. So we'd be taking two feet off of the parking width on each side of the street.
So that'd be, in addition for the bikers?
Would, yes, it would.
Not for the, not for the vehicles, cars or trucks?
The, the cars and trucks would still be able to park in the eight-foot, but the through lane traffic would...
But I mean, the through lane traffic.
Well, right at the shero, it would be, you know, eleven feet, something, but only in the distance of where the shero is, which...
And, and we don't need to make this decision tonight. We're authorizing reconstruction of the road. We're not changing widths, we're not changing anything else. This will come down to how the road is striped when we're finished. So this is actually something that we can have another open house with the neighbors or discuss this later, correct?
Yes.
Will it impact, like, our striping bidding or anything like that? Or not significantly?
We have plenty of time to do it.
Okay. So are you okay with that, as long as we're going to let you know that we're going to be talking about this again?
Sure. No, I appreciate letting the residents voice an opinion on this. Without knowing the other things, I say, forty-two years, it's worked good, leave her the same.
Yeah, I know it. We, we actually get some credit as a city for having those designated bike, bike lanes. I mean, isn't that kind of it, we, you end up increasing your status within the bicycling groups and in the green steps and are there things that we gain?
I think even beyond that, as city staff, this is something that newer people that are coming in to move into the city are telling us they want to see more, more bikes, bike lanes, bike...
And sidewalks.
Trails, sidewalks, yes, so...
All right. Thank you. Is there anybody else here to address the public hearing on that? Okay, thank you.
I just want to bring up...
Come up to the mic, please, and tell us who you are and what your address is.
Cindy Johnson. I live at one oh four nine five Mississippi Boulevard. And I work out in my front yard a lot. We have a lot of people using the street, and it's great. Walkers, bikers, people taking their dogs for a walk. The thing that scares me the most is there's a lot of speeding. And I can't tell you how many times a little kids are biking, a group of three or four kids, somebody is flying down the street, and I live right on a curve. It scares me to death, someone, I'm surprised nobody has been hurt by a person driving too fast. I think one way we could make it safer is, we need more patrolling when school lets out at Pinoka Ramsey. I'll be out there, I actually will yell, "Slow down," because they're speeding, and they come around the curve and almost come right off the road. They've taken out our mailbox twice, which that's not a big deal. I worry more about the people using the street. I think it's great that we have that wide area for the walkers, the bikers, the dogs, whoever. That's what we should be having. But people aren't following the laws of the road. And to me, that, if that's taken care of, that street's been relatively safe, but it's only a matter of time. And we're already so congested by the college area, the McDonald's entrance, that is the worst corner. If school's getting out, kids are trying to get into McDonald's, people are, there's no turn signal, it's the worst area in the whole world already. I was hoping that would be taken care of. But there's that safety issue with speeders all the time. Every once in a while, I see them setting up their traps, but it's all the time. And one of the, I don't like to do too much, because, you know, people are kind of violent today. But I don't want to see a child or anybody hurt. And it is nice to see people out using the city roads. And it isn't a high, it is high traffic only at times of the day. And that's when people are coming in and out of school, for one thing, I can tell you that. And so, we just need to enforce those laws, because they got to understand, on top of cell phones, texting, they go by speeding and they're looking down at their phones. It's like, we really need to make the city safe by making them follow the rules we have. That's all I wanted to say on that matter.
Thank you.
You know, I've noticed more and more of these devices that solar powered would show the speed of the vehicles are going by, not the huge ones, but the small ones, especially near schools. And to me, it seems like they're really effective, because I always, when, when I see that, if I'm, if, if I'm going over the speed limit, immediately slow down when I see that. And it seems like maybe that's a discussion we need to have in terms of, of the cost of those types of items.
And on average, how far over the speed limit are you when that thing starts going? Oh, that's, that's another time.
One time I was two miles over, and it really scared me. So I...
That's how he got his gray hair.
The, the average solar power driver feedback sign costs about ten thousand dollars a piece, and you would need two of them. The research that's out there for these things, I, I agree with you, and when I see them, I tend to slow down as well. But on average, if you look at all the traffic that's using the roads, it only produces about a one to two mile-per-hour average speed reduction. And I think there's people out there that see these things and try to get them up as high as they can go, too. So they have that effect. There's also, when you put them in an area, too, where there hasn't been one ever, they also tend to be the recipient of vandalism as well. So those are just things to consider.
Has there been any research done in terms of the lowering of accidents, where those things have been?
Do we have much incident of accident on Mississippi Boulevard down there?
Nothing comes to mind at the top of my head.
Well, I guess the reason I ask that is just to see what the effectiveness of it would be. Because I do know, I, it's not, I see people, everybody that goes by them, a lot of times you see them slowing down as they're going by. And the concern of the person just talked to is legitimate concern. You know, maybe we haven't had many accidents right now, it takes one thing, or is a tragedy. And I can understand what a road like that, where people would just not be thinking and driving too fast.
Yeah, we, we received a couple of comments from people over the course of conducting open houses about bumpouts in a couple spots. We looked at that, and really couldn't make the drainage work, plus it affects our snowplow operations quite substantially, where those would potentially be located. One thing that doing, putting a designated bike lane on each side of the street and eliminating the parking would is, that would do, is that you would narrow up those through lanes to eleven feet. And having a narrower through lane for the entire length would produce some kind, you know, most drivers see that and tend to slow down a little bit. We can certainly also review the corridor via our traffic review committee and see if additional speed limit signs could be warranted. People have suggested stop signs throughout. Stop signs are really for the assignment of right-of-way, and when they're not placed in appropriate locations, people will tend to speed up in between, so they have the opposite effect of really slowing people down.
I think because of the public hearing, we should just be listening to the people?
Well, I think you, that was kind of a response to the, anybody else here for the public hearing for Project sixteen dash two, Mississippi Boulevard? Hearing none. I will close the public hearing. Find the comments to council.
Your honor.
Counselor Manning?
I move adoption of Resolution Number sixteen dash two sub six A.
Second.
Motion by Manning, second by Geisler. Discussion?
Your honor, just to your point that, that, you know, the costs are going to be there, but I think we all want to see what this is going to look like, and certainly the residents deserve to see this in a, you know, to be able to come to an open house and see how this is going to lay out. It would make it easier for me to actually see it. And I would agree that, you know, the road has not been a dangerous road. People have, you know, been there forever, pedestrians and bicyclists, but if this would make it a little safer even, or, you know, like you say, a more designated area for bicyclists, it is a very popular recreational thing, but I would like to see it laid out, too. But it won't affect the cost of the project.
Counselor Geisler?
Mr. Mayor, I, I think the bike lane, not bike lane, shero is for a later discussion. But I really kind of want to address the one complaint, and it's really back to what Mr. Hanson talked about at the beginning. Only twenty percent of the cost is borne by the people who live on the road. And it's no different whether you live on Mississippi Boulevard, or a hundred and fourth, or anytime we do it, it's the same assessment for the house. And it's because it's part of our usage of that road, and when you live on that road, you tend to use it more than somebody who lives on another part of the city. It doesn't mean that you are bearing all of the burden for that road, and that it's, it's how we distribute and use, because there are an awful lot of tax dollars that are used. Eighty percent of it is covered. And it's just the assessment for the people who use that road, just like you are not assessed for Northdale, you're not assessed for Coon Rapids Boulevard, you're not assessed for other roads that you drive on in the city. And so, it's, it's part of the process of how, how it works.
Any other discussion?
May I, may I speak, or is that done?
Oh, we're, we're, we're actually done with public hearing now.
I want to respond to that.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion here? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion carries.
Your honor.
Counselor Manning?
I move adoption of Resolution sixteen dash, all right, does he need to go over this first?
No.
No, no, we're doing the adoption.
The second half of the...
Okay, yeah, well, Mr. Demmer, I'm sorry. Okay. I move adoption of Resolution sixteen dash two sub eight, approved plans specifications and ordering advertisement for bids.
Second.
Motion by Manning, second by Geisler. Discussion? Counselor Clint?
Is this the part where if we, are we approving the plans as is, or are we going to...
Mr. Mayor, I, I'm just an engineer, but I put a little sketch together here, and I just, I just wanted to clarify very, very quickly.
And it's not, by any means saying you're approving this sketch.
Will this be to scale?
Yes, it is.
Where's the overhead?
Color, yeah. You want color.
I don't have color.
John didn't have his crayons over there at the counter for you?
No. I think, to this gentleman's point back here, we are not changing the roadway width at all. The roadway width is staying the same curb to curb under what's proposed.
You want from ten?
Currently, today, there are eight-foot wide park lanes... No, they're ten feet. I'm sorry, ten-foot lane, ten-foot wide park lanes, and twelve-foot line, twelve-foot wide through lanes. So we're stealing two feet off of the ten-foot and dropping those to eight, and adding a fourteen-foot through lane and putting the little sheros along the edge. So the roadway will function as it always has. People will walk opposite direction of traffic and bike the same direction as traffic. We're just converting a ten-foot parking lane, narrowing that up to eight foot, and putting that more in the drive lane. And I think to the speeding concerns as well, adding that additional signage, having that additional out there drawing attention to sharing the road. So I, I know this doesn't give you everything that you want, but I think it sums up the fact that we're not changing the width, we're not adding more to one side or the other. We're just taking two feet out of each of these currently parked lanes and putting them into fourteen-foot wide drive lanes and giving the bikers, you know, a three-foot, four-foot swath along that edge. So that, I don't know if that helps or confuses you.
Yeah, I'm, I'm still interested in seeing what the final striping looks like, because if all it's going to be is that little biking thing every two hundred feet, all we're doing is making the drive lanes wider, and I don't think it's going to have that calming effect that we're looking for to slow the cars down, in my opinion.
Mr. Mayor, if you wanted to do a non-street parking lane, the only way to do that is to widen the road or eliminate parking on one side or the other. We cannot stripe, we cannot add another stripe here, for example, because we don't have adequate width to do that. So we either need to go with the sheros, or look at eliminating parking on one side and restriping this whole thing. Or the other option is, take it off-street altogether and then deal with the lift stations and impacted properties and all of those other things that go with that. So there, there is no way we can add striping. So all it's going to be is the white stripes down the side for parking and the dash line down the middle to distinguish between those drive lanes. We cannot add striping for a bike lane, because it's not wide enough to do so.
Your honor.
Counselor Clint?
But you will have those little bike marks with the two...
Every two hundred feet, at a minimum.
So, my point before, if you look at this, we just heard that, you know, parking isn't that big of a problem, that there aren't that many, you know, once in a while, you have big parties or whatever, there's cars. But for like most of the day, there's not all that much parking on the side of the road. But with these sheros, people are then able to bike down ten feet off, you know, seven, eight to ten feet off the curb...
They do today.
With nothing there. And they don't have to move over, though, when a car comes.
Shouldn't have to.
They don't have to.
If they're driving in the lane, they shouldn't have to.
Yeah. But I'm just saying that, you know, they, if there's no cars over there, they still can basically be in that road, and a car can honk all they want, and they don't have to move over.
I'm just a little unclear on what resolution we're discussing, because it says approving plans and specifications and ordering advertisement for bids. Does that have anything to do with the striping?
Well, ultimately, the striping component will be there.
It'll be, so your bid package is going to be to draw the stripes, including, so we, so is this an appropriate time to discuss this plan, is really my question?
I would say if, if you want to get down to every detail of this plan, now is the time. You're approving plans and specifications. Our proposal to you is, this is the option. We could certainly go back to another neighborhood meeting, you know, that would be number three. I think we've had a total of twenty people show up at the two to date. So if you didn't want to approve the plans and specs, I will say, this one has total water main replacement. This is an important one to get out of the chute early, and I don't want to, you know, put the pressure on you, but we certainly do have some time constraints with this one, because we've got to get full water main, we've got to deal with the school, we've got to deal with access, Fourth of July, and, and getting everyone back to wholeness by the time this, this season ends. So going to another neighborhood meeting and coming, we could certainly distribute letters, we can update you with information through the Friday memo. I, I think we understand your direction. I guess, I would ask, from your perspective, are you comfortable with what you see here? Your direction right now is, you're not really sure what we have to offer. And I'm trying to make that, to get your feedback on whether you're okay... to make that, to get your feedback on whether you're okay with this before we then go back to the residents and say, this is kind of the direction we're headed.
Your Honor.
Counselor Manning?
You know, whether the markings are there or not, bikers have a right to use the road. So it's, I don't understand what the big deal is about putting markings every 200 feet showing that bikes are riding along there. And I agree with Councilman Demmer that if, if there's no cars there, they're probably going to move further off the street anyway. But certainly, if the, if there's no markings, there, there's still going to be bikers that are biking down that road where the markings would be. And there's enough room for both the cars and the bikes. And the cars need to just watch what they're doing, I guess, you know, it's just, I think this is really a non-issue, in my opinion.
Counselor Manning, which is a non-issue? Adding the shero lines or not adding the shero?
I think the way they have it, putting the markings every 200 feet is, is fine. I, I don't see, if there's enough room for park with the lesser width, then do it. It just opens up a wider road lane, and there's enough room for bikes and for cars to go down that road. And certainly, accidents can happen anywhere at any time, but if, if, you know, cars should be texting, they should be watching where they're going, and to me, it just seems like it's not going to make a difference whether you have the markings there or not, but I think the markings probably are a good idea, so that the cars at least know that, hey, the bikes have a right to this road also.
Counselor Demmer?
So after we decided it was okay to discuss it, so when I see this in Minneapolis, I always think it looks like a problem, but I think, I always think it looks like a problem because you have so much activity coming from the lane into the parking lane, coming back out of the parking lane, and it's nearly impossible to find a place where you can cross the center line to, to go around in a city street where bikers are generally going to be over on the side anyway, cars in a wide street are going to give them birth and go around them. And from my running in that area, I haven't seen a ton of parked cars. I, I'm fine with having the sheros. I'm also fine with having a 14-foot wide lane and not having the sheros because I think the exact same thing will happen in both cases. If people see a bike, they'll go around it, and if the bike sees a parked car, they'll go around it. So I, I would support it if this is the, the best plan you guys think sees, you know, you see going forward. I like the wider lane for accommodating the bike traffic. I agree that it's probably not going to reduce the speed of cars.
I'd call it that myself. I, I live on that street, and that's a two-mile-long road. And unless you're going to, unless those shero lanes are actually going to be painted green or something, every 200 feet isn't going to comb the cars. And to take over from a 12-foot wide driving lane to a 14-foot wide driving lane, I'll bet the speeds are going to go up proportionately to that extra, that extra room, you're going to feel like you're on a road that should be 50 miles an hour. I'm with the guy in the back that spoke. I like it the way it is now.
I'll go with that.
Back to that. That's just me.
Your Honor, I'm fine with that, leaving it as is. You know, I could go with the lanes too, but I'm fine. I think it's, you know, it's the best area of the city to bike or walk in now, and that wouldn't change.
Can I say something?
Hang on a second, I think we're coming around to it. Counselor Geisler?
So question for you, Mr. Hammer. You know, to me, when we're looking to order plans and specifications and advertisements for bid, it's to stripe the road. And there's still going to be a dotted line in the middle, there's still going to be a solid line on either side. The price differential is the painting of the little bike, with the chevrons. If we can take that as a potential separate or add-on addendum to that bid and allow a conversation to say, do we want the little bikes with the chevrons, or do we not? Because to me, it really should not affect the price of the bid if the line is at the eight-foot or at 10-foot, right?
Absolutely.
Right? So is that reasonable to move forward with, we've got our motion in a second to look at?
Add it as a project alternate.
And add it as an alternate? And then look to say, are we gonna, you know, what's the delta for just adding the additional painting? I mean, because that's all that's different.
So we're kind of back to where we started originally before you came over to the podium, Mr. Hammer?
Glad I could help.
Counselor Manning?
Just so you understand, I, when I said it's a non-issue, I could go either way.
I could go either.
You know, it's just.
Counselor Clint?
I just want to, hold on, buddy, I mean, is the no parking on one side completely off the?
Yes. Yes.
Counselor Demmer?
Do we need any sort of friendly amendment to make that an alternate, or is it just understood?
We understand.
Move to call the question.
We have very, a very smart legal department here.
All right, so you actually want to call the question, or should we just have a?
Let's just vote.
All right, let's just vote, all right. All in favor of adopting resolution 16-2, I've got it turned on, but you know what it was, we already got it.
Sub 8.
Sub 8, thank you. We've already got our motion, right, in our second?
Yep.
Okay, so, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion carries. Oh, Mr. Hanson, you're back.
Uh, can I get the?
Mr. Hanson, could you make this a little shorter?
I'll try. Uh, can I get the, can I get the monitor back? So our 16-3 project includes streets, MSA routes, that are generally lying west of Hanson Boulevard. These streets include Crooked Lake Boulevard from 100 and, well, south of 128th Avenue to 133rd Avenue, 128th Avenue itself from Crooked Lake Boulevard to Coon Creek Boulevard, then Round Lake Boulevard where we left off a couple of years ago in 2015 and bringing that down south from 115th to Mississippi Drive, and then Mississippi Drive itself from Round Lake Boulevard to Pheasant Ridge Drive. These projects include road resurfacing, replacement of damaged curb and gutter, driveway panels, repair of storm and sanitary manholes, replacement of hydrants and valves. We don't have any large amounts of water main replacement in this particular project. And then some additional storm sewer and drain tile work on Mississippi Drive. We have a section of that street, kind of in the middle between Round Lake and Pheasant Ridge, where we've had some challenges with high groundwater levels, and so we're going to extend some storm sewer in those areas to allow for some additional sump pump connections and just to help with the groundwater situation that we're experiencing in that area. One thing I want to note about this particular project is that Crooked Lake Boulevard, we have sent a couple of letters to residents that are out of the assessment area, but still are affected by a proposed sidewalk segment that we would like to extend from south of 128th Avenue down to the Alexandra's Cove development. And that would allow people to get from along Crooked Lake Boulevard to up to Northdale and then down to Main Street in both directions. The sidewalk itself is in the city's comprehensive trail and sidewalk plan. We sent letters to people, we really didn't get any negative feedback at all about it.
Makes you wonder if they opened their mail.
Well, we had some questions from people, but nobody had any major concerns. So that's really all I have as part of the presentation. There were two people, two property owners that contested the assessments. Doug and Joanne Lawrence, excuse me, well, actually, I'll go to this one first. This one came from Mr. Dale Voltein, I'm not sure if he's here or not, he must not be. And he is the owner of these, I don't know if you can see my cursor, but several single-family lots on the east side of Crooked Lake Boulevard. His objection for the public hearing and street reconstruction project 16-3, it says, "My objection to the project is based on the fact that I am being assessed on five properties when the water and sewer and street was installed and improved in 2008, for which I paid the special assessments and a $14,000 park dedication fee." And then he lists the different property ID numbers generally in this area here. So.
Those five without homes there?
Yeah, these properties are platted, I understand, in 2008, and then the recession happened, and he had to pay special assessments for the installation of sewer and water services. There are street patches. I wouldn't say that the, the street was improved necessarily when that happened, they were just, there's patches out there. And as part of this project, we need to go and improve the entire street segment. But that was his written contested. And then the Lawrencees, Doug and Joanne, we've been working with them on recording their plat. They have a, a single-family development that was approved about a year or so ago of 10 single-family homes, both sides of 128th Avenue. So as it exists today, the property is being used for agricultural purposes, so it gets the commercial assessment, and we're working with them to record that plat, so as we continue to step through the assessment process, we'll recalculate the assessment to the single family once that gets recorded. So it's kind of a matter of just making sure the process is followed, followed here. They're contesting the, the agricultural or the commercial rate assessment.
And, and all of those and the five that we just talked about, those are all single-family? So they'd be looking at single-family rates?
Correct, yep.
All right, thank you. Counselor Clint, did you have something?
If you could go back to those five, oh, you have it up there. So what you're saying is back in 2008, when they got assessed, basically that was for like, from the street into the property as far as sewer and water and all that?
Yep.
Okay. Oh, Your Honor. I just ask another question, I don't know if my memory serves me right, but is 128th Avenue a smaller street than normal width-wise? I thought we had problems with parking years ago before your time because the street was narrower than normal. Not that it makes a difference with this, I'm just wondering if.
If I remember, Councilman Clinton, when the plat was coming through 128, there was some discussion amongst the council about some concern for parking, and I think there was restricted parking down at the high, high-density location to the east. So I guess the history would say that you all knew more about it than we did, but from a width perspective?
Yeah, I don't have the, the, a copy of the plan with me right now, but I do, when I have been out there, I have seen the no parking signs.
It's because it was narrower than normal.
Challenges with, with parking there.
Counselor Demmer?
I just wanted to make sure I understood on that second one, the, they're challenging it, and are you saying you're agreeing with their challenge, you just have to get through the paperwork and they'll ultimately pay the lower price?
Well, if they can record the plat before we adopt the assessment, they should be able to be charged for the single family.
And then the assumption is that if that happens, they would no longer be challenging it?
Correct, yep.
And on the prior one, do we have any sort of precedent for something like this? Somebody who has replatted land that now all of a sudden has five properties and doesn't have a house on any of them is paying as if they do? Because I.
Not that I'm.
The one across the street is essentially the same thing. As soon as we plat that, it's going to be a number of lots with no houses there.
Yeah, and they get charged five times, right?
They could have.
That, that's.
Yeah, it was kind of an unfortunate timing of the way this property was subdivided. It was a, a bad time, and there's risks with development.
And ultimately, if they sold it, the better road would be part of the?
Yes, I mean, in theory, yes. I mean, the improved road should make it more of a saleable property. I don't know that that's much consolation for the property owner, but.
It, it's part of the curb appeal. I mean, it's, it'll be a much nicer-looking road, it looks hammered up right now.
Yeah.
Counselor Geisler?
So in your conversations with the Lawrencees, they're clear with the date that the proposed adoption would be to ensure that they're on target?
Yes.
To have that plat redone? Because I would hate to have it happen a day or two later and.
Yeah, we continue to, to be in contact with them to make sure that they're continuing to progress in that process and get that recorded. And if I may add, Mr. Mayor, also with that one, there was some, when this was platted some time ago, there was some issue with getting utilities in. So as part of this project, we would look to extend utilities, and that's something else we've been talking to the Lawrencees about, because that doesn't exist like the last one where they came in and put the utility stubs in. I think they were having a hard time marketing initially anyway, and so they didn't want to file the plat, do the roadway patch, and then potentially we come back a few years later. So we'll be looking to them as we get to that plating, is also work with them on installing utilities for their properties and having them pay those assessments at the same time, incorporating it all into the same plan set.
Anything else on that, Mr. Hanson?
Question for me.
All right. So then, in the case of resolution number 16-3 sub 8, Crooked Lake Boulevard from 127th Circle to 133rd Avenue, 128th Avenue from Crooked Lake Boulevard to Coon Creek Boulevard, Mississippi Drive from Round Lake Boulevard to Pheasant Ridge Drive, and Round Lake Boulevard from Mississippi Drive to 115th Avenue. If you would like to address the council, I will open the public hearing and the assessment hearing for that project. Is anybody here to address counsel for project 16-3? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing.
Mr. Mayor?
Counselor Geisler?
I'd like to make a motion to adopt resolution 16-3 sub 6A, ordering the improvement for the roads.
Second. Motion by Geisler, second by Manning. Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion carries.
Mr. Mayor? I'd like to make a motion to adopt resolution 16-3 sub 8, approving the plans and specifications and ordering advertisement for bid.
Second. Motion by Geisler, second by Johnson. Any discussion on that? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. All right, Mr. Hanson?
All right, our last street reconstruction project is 16-4, which exists of routes that generally lie east of Hanson Boulevard. So the first two project, or three or four segments of, of street are shown on the map here. It includes Zeon Street from 114th Avenue to Northdale Boulevard, 113th Avenue between Foley and Northdale, Dogwood from Northdale to 115th and 114th to University. So that whole segment kind of in between University and Foley there. And I'll just flip to this graphic. It also includes Eagerd Boulevard from where we left off last year, 2015, at Kumquat, and then bringing that out to University Avenue. And this project includes the resurfacing of the road, replacing damaged curb and gutter, driveway panels, repair of storm and sanitary manholes, replacement of hydrants and valves, however, also including water main replacement on the entire segment of Zeon Street. And then the same, basically, for Eagerd Boulevard, resurfacing the road, replacement of hydrants and valves, replacing concrete, curb and gutter and driveway panels. We had a couple of different written objections submitted to staff here today. One was from Mr. Ryan Brant, and he's the owner of 330 Northdale Chiropracting?
Coon Rapids Chiropractic.
Correct. And he has a rear access on the back of his property, kind of where I'm pointing to with the cursor here, onto 113th. The information that we have and that the county has shows that he actually owns that stretch, and the city has an easement over it. So right now, he has an assessment on that. We also talked to him about this little pie-shaped piece. He happens to own the property just to the north of that. Certainly combined, those are two very, it's a very developable property. Even though it's vacant, our policy, we still assess for vacant properties. We looked at the smaller property to the south. Technically, it's developable, but it would be very difficult to get parking in there. So what we're proposing to do is to work with him and actually postpone any kind of. So what we're proposing to do is to work with him and actually postpone any kind of an assessment on that piece until development happens in the future. So his letter basically lays out that he contests the assessment on both of these as being unreasonable and, I guess I won't read the whole thing unless you ask me to, but...
Yeah, well, and this one is from the twelfth, and you've you've reached an agreement with them.
I think so. I I think you were copying it.
Yeah.
I think he's comfortable with kind of, we'll continue to work with this property owner to make sure that he understands, and we continue to step through the process before the assessments are adopted in in April. And if any adjustments need to be made, we'll we'll do that. The other written objection is from the the funeral home, also on one hundred and thirteenth Avenue, and they're currently being assessed for the entire footage from Foley to where this property line is here. Hopefully, you can see my cursor here, right there. What's going on is the county, Anoke County is currently purchasing the eastern half, this this vacant part of their lot for ponding purposes as part of the Foley-Northdale project. And so they're contesting the assessment based on the footage and and the benefit, and we will continue to work with this property owner. So as the county steps through the rest of that acquisition, we'll just adjust the assessment accordingly to be based on the new property limits. They do have an access onto one hundred and thirteenth, so according to our policy, we would assess them at the commercial rate.
And they're not being assessed for their frontage on Foley?
No.
When that's being done this year?
Correct.
All right, anything else, Mr. Hanson?
No.
All right. Get to the right one here. All right. So then we will open the public hearing and assessment hearing in the matter of Egrit Boulevard from Kumquat to University, one hundred and thirteenth Avenue from Foley to Northdale, Dogwood Street from Northdale to one hundred and fifteenth Avenue, one hundred and fifteenth Avenue from Dogwood to University, Exion Street from one hundred and fourteenth Avenue to Northdale Boulevard, and this is is sixteen dash four. So with that, I will open the public hearing and the assessment hearing. Is anybody here to address counsel for that project? Yes, sir. Please approach the mic and give us your name and address, sir.
Hi, good evening. My name's Glenn Gazell. I live at four one two Egrit Boulevard, and it's just one house down from Foley. I'm new to the area. I just bought my house this past August there. Looked like great neighborhood. Since I've lived there, my taxes have gone up, and now I've got this other part going. I'm afraid to find out what's going to happen next. You know, hoping I'll have some other taxes go up on me here. It really surprised me to find out that the people on the street will pay for the improvements, and we have, I hear, we're just paying only twenty percent. Well, that's an awful lot, you know? And I would figure, you know, it'd fit into a city budget instead of just a street budget, you know? And I want to express my concern over that. And Egrit's going to be a busy street, so I see it being used more on a city than just residential. You know, we have a fire station down there, and there's three lanes that I have to cross the street to get to my mailbox. Yeah, so it's it's a citywide thing, and I don't see why it would just have to be just for Egrit Boulevard on that stretch.
That that section of the street that you're on there, that's got to be about as close to a a county, I mean, the number of cars they've got on that stretch of Egrit. It seems like that almost rises to the level of like a Foley or, you know, it's surprising that's not one of our county roads, but...
Right, I think it's a main road between Coon Rapids Boulevard to Foley to University. It's a main street through there.
It is.
So I don't feel it's it's not it's not really residential. I figure it should be more of a city thing than just the local people on that street.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We're not we're not unusual in that we assess residents for a portion of the street. We're actually unusual in the small amount that we assess. Many communities assess a much greater portion to the residents for the street construction. Coon Rapids actually tries to maintain a general budget that can can that can do most of the street constructions. And and I appreciate your your distinction. Egrit, this will be state aid, right? So again, this will be reconstructed to a higher standard, but you'll still pay the same rate as if you were on a street that isn't under the higher standard. Not that it really probably makes a difference.
Again, that's why I thought my taxes had gone up, and then I got this notice.
Yeah.
So it's kind of a double whammy there.
You must, yeah, you must be in that little slot where your taxes went up, because we've, a lot of people's taxes went down this year, but... Counselor Manning?
Sometimes it, when taxes go up, people zero on where they live, but there's also one-third of the taxes, your property taxes, that go to the school district. One-third goes in a county, one-third goes in a city, or approximately that. So if you break it down, if you look at it, maybe it wasn't a city portion that went up that much. It could have been a county, or all three.
Sorry, this should be it now, though. We're not going to do that street again for a very long time.
I certainly hope so.
Thank you. And welcome to Coon Rapids, by the way. Counselor Geiser?
I I think, you know, I I appreciate and understand, you know, people wanting to say, well, let's put it all, you know, and have the city pay for it. Well, if if you think about it, that means you get assessed when we do today your your street. You get, you know, this the limited portion, and it's years before this would happen again, where if it was in a pool, you would be paying every year because we're redoing streets in the city all the time. And so the net of what you would be paying is really no different, and it may end up being more depending on when you move in or move out of the city, because that money is going to come somewhere. So you get assessed when you're getting the benefit and the work being done in your area. You, we're not asking you to pay for everything else in the rest of the city. You know, and so if you, if we did that, you would get asked to pay more every year. And so in the long run, it's about the same. I guess that's where I'm going with that.
You're almost right. Isn't that eighty percent that they are paying maybe isn't fair?
No, it it's just looking that, you know, to me, the argument that if if the city's taxes paid for it, you're going to be paying for it a little bit every year instead of the one assessment when when it comes to you. So it it all, pretty much adds the same.
Is there anybody else here for the public hearing for sixteen dash four? Yes, sir. Who, you've been sitting a long time, I'm sorry.
We spoke earlier today. My name is Paul Burning. My company's Kennedy Scales. We're right down here on one one four eight five Zion. I also own the property, just recently purchased one one four nine five for future expansion, just purchased it probably two years ago. I guess the main reason I'm here, most of the business owners here pretty much have decided it's kind of a foregone conclusion that we're going to be assessed those particular rates. And it's it's substantial. You know, after getting the notice just in late January, you know, this comes in the mail basically, and that basically we're going to be assessed that particular amount of money. And from that little stretch from Northdale to one fourteenth, just kind of doing the math, it equates to probably over a hundred fifty thousand dollars that basically six or seven businesses are going to have to come up with, okay? It's a lot of money for a small business. And you, when you consider the amount of traffic that is on that street, one fourteenth basically funnels all the overpass traffic down across Zion, plus you've got several trucking companies that are a tremendous amount of heavy-capacity traffic going through there daily, beating the dickens out of that road. And also, the assessment is, what I'm questioning somewhat is, the side streets aren't assessed. Behind my business, there's probably five, six businesses that aren't getting any assessment from that Zion improvement. So pretty much you've got just six, seven businesses that are going to be, you know, getting hit on that particular dollar amount. And like I said, for a small business, that's, it's a hit, and especially if they're short of a notice. But, you know, the city Coon Rapids has been great as far as we work with and everything else. Mark has been very good to talk to when it comes to concerns and what have you. But I just wanted to, you know, make my opinion noted, and as well as somebody other business owners, too, that probably never, you know, obviously didn't make it tonight. But I felt I just had to, you know, make the comments accordingly, because it it does become somewhat of a decision process, too, with other business owners, whether they want to do business in a, you know, particular city when, you know, when they're going to get hit with this type of thing. And as I understand, some of these other roads may be improved, and there'll be some other assessments for the USFs and the, you know, I think there's several other trucking companies. USF is the biggest one, of course, I think Roadrunner, and I think Allied Transport as well. But but there again, it's still, wanted to make my opinion known that I just think it's a bit excessive, and if there's any way to reevaluate the assessment process, or at least people on these side streets who use Zion as much as we do are not going to be getting anything. So thanks for, appreciate your time.
Counselor Manning?
Just want to comment, this is a discussion we've had, and we just recently have talked about this at a workshop, so you're not alone in your thinking, so. Wanted to let you know that. I don't know if it makes you feel better, but...
Not really.
I was saying, add that to your bottom line, huh?
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Hi, I'm Patty Johnson, Modern Tool, twelve hundred Northdale Boulevard, and I just want to reiterate Paul's comments. We, I know that your letter said that, you know, the the assessment was going to the companies, the businesses that were benefiting from the from the improvement. And while that is definitely the case for us, I think there's a lot of, again, trucking companies and other businesses that are benefiting from from that improvement. And now, I mean, specifically for us, we are so close to Northdale Boulevard, literally, right? I mean, a few feet from Northdale Boulevard is our first driveway, so literally we drive on, right, just a portion. And to be to be assessed, you know, over thirty thousand, when we already pay a couple hundred thousand dollars a year in in taxes, is is a substantial amount, you know, for our company. So I I don't know if there's any way that you could reconsider, you know, who is getting a portion of the assessment, but but that's why I'm here tonight, too, just, you know, to reiterate that, you know, Paul's comments as well.
Mr. Hanson, as Counselor Manning alluded to, we did speak quite a bit about Exion and about the 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 demand, the capacity that the trucking company adds to the road there. But the challenge was, they're still going to have to pay for their whole end of the street when that's done, correct?
That that's correct, Mr. Mayor and council members. Eventually, we're going to do those side streets, and those people will get assessed at that time. And the rates tend to go up each year, so they'll probably wind up paying more, potentially. Of course, it depends on the footage. I think the challenge in trying to set up some kind of a tiered system like that, then you'll wind up getting a lot of pushback from these side streets where they're not seeing any direct benefit along the front of their property, is just how that gets shown from a legal standpoint. And I'm not sure to what extent other cities have been successful in doing that, but it's, the the concerns that we've got from the business owners here tonight have been something that we've been hearing. And actually, I was supposed to include that in my presentation. I'm sorry, Paul, that I forgot to note that, but yes, that's something that we've been hearing.
And then also, is there some way that we can kind of change how we get them get them notice? Because by the time they do get the amount, their bud, their their sixteen budget is probably already done, so...
That's very true, because, yeah, the budget aspect for sixteen for two thousand sixteen was done last fall, December, December, as far as two sixteen. And when you take that substantial of a hit, obviously you have to make changes in other, you know, parts of your business, as far as purchasing vehicles or purchasing forklifts or what have you, so, you know, you know that, because my budgeting was saved.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Hammer, and then Counselor Clint.
Just just a couple of points. On on the first question of, could we look at taking it out and assessing others? That wouldn't change the assessment to the existing properties that are there. It's a front-footage basis. So it would be less money that the city would kick in, and you'd have to look at, are they benefiting fifty percent of what they are, thirty percent, twenty percent? And that's where it gets a little challenging. So instead of going into that, keeping everyone at the same rates, and then getting them on those side streets. So even if we did apportion it differently, it wouldn't change the assessments to the existing people, because it's based upon the front footage. On your second point, while we didn't get the exact amount of the assessment out, we did have open houses in both November or December and January. So notices did go out that road reconstruction is coming. Please contact us if you have questions. Please come to these. So while there wasn't a dollar amount assigned to it, there was some indication that road reconstruction is coming, and please let us know if you have any questions or concerns or things that that might...
But but just like, just like a city, by December or January, our budget's locked in. So if if we could get them some notice that we're anticipating, you know, next year doing this road, if we could, you know, I mean, obviously, it would be, it would be a lot of flux, because nothing would be approved, but if we if we do anticipate doing a road in a certain year, maybe it would be nice if we could give them some notice, some more notice. Counselor Clint?
I know this might throw a wrench in the whole business of our reconstruction this year, but I'm wondering, because I know this is one of the worst roads, because I drive it, if this isn't something that maybe we could hold off on until we can figure out, simply because if you look at those trucking firms, their footprint in the city, I mean, they got a lot of land back there. They, you know, those trucks cover a lot of land compared to a smaller, you know, business like Kennedy Scales, okay? And we say their road's going to be done in the future, and they'll be assessed. They're the only ones that drive that road. And if you go by front footage, it's so much less than what some of these businesses will be paying for the whole rest of Exion. And to me, that just, that just is so unfair that I I just don't know how we can move forward with that.
Mr. Hanson? I don't know if you all, wait for you to see if you have an answer for that one, but then I've got a different question. Sorry.
I guess I'm basking it for the rest of you guys, because it's ultimately up to us. I mean, I just think it's so unfair when we know the problem with that street is mostly due to the trucks coming on and off that street.
Well, fairness, we did workshop, and we did talk about it, and we couldn't figure out a different plan B, because they will be paying eventually when the...
For their driveway. Basically, what they're going to be paying for is their driveway. It might be a city street, but no one goes down there, because the only thing that's down there is that company.
Thank you.
So it's, and it's, the the amount of front footage for them to go into that small piece of property is so small, because it is basically just a driveway, compared to their vast amount of land that they take up with our city. It it just...
I I don't know that that's necessarily, I I guess we'd have to look at what the property lines lay out.
Well, yeah, but if you're driving by there, you can see its smaller entrance than what they own.
It's, I mean, they own like two blocks, really, of of street there.
I think they own quite, you know, I'd say it's probably in the order of a couple hundred feet, but it's going off of memory.
Good suggestion. It's been suggested to close the public hearing. Is there anybody else here to address counsel for the public hearing and the assessment hearing portion of this? I will close the public hearing and limit comments to the council. Mr. Hanson, my question was, we were talking about the construction of that road, and what are we doing specific to that road to, for the capacity? I mean, are we doing anything extra there to handle all the trucks, or is it built, being rebuilt the same standard as like Mississippi Boulevard?
No, it's got a, it's, the pavement's designed with a higher heavy commercial ADT percentage. So the normal state-aid street has like a three to seven percent. We have it at a seventeen percent for Zeon Street. Same with Evergreen, Ninety-third, and Ninetieth. So that results in a thicker pavement section, which translates into approximately thirty percent of additional cost. That's how we arrived at the industrial... That's how we arrived at the industrial rate.
I see. Mr. Mayor. Councilor Johnson and then Councilor Demmer.
A couple of things. We, we had a very lengthy, just so that people know, workshop about this where we explored all sorts of alternatives, including putting down concrete as, as a roadway there. So the hope would be that it would last much longer and there would be, you know, less, there would be less of a need to repair it going forward. I'm very empathetic to the notion that the, these road improvements are being caused by a couple of companies who we want in the city and who we value as a part of our city. But, um, but they're hard on the road. And the, the need for the, the reconstruction now is being really borne by other commercial businesses and industrial businesses that frankly and candidly use the road much less and much less vigorously. And so, we had a long conversation at a workshop about it. It was at times even a contentious conversation because of these fairness issues. And we're left frankly where we began, which is that we, throughout the city, approach this by assessing it per front foot. And I don't think there's going to be any deviation from that in this process. And so I'm going to make a motion tonight to approve or adopt the resolution as written. But I also want to say that your voices were valuable tonight. And I would like to have us workshop something down the road this year about whether there can be some other form of relief that we might be able to provide or another, another way of addressing some of these issues. Because candidly, this is an important commercial district in my ward. And in the city, at least I think it's on my ward and if it's not, it borders it. A part of this project is definitely in my ward. And I would like to see us continue to have that conversation and to see if there is some way to lessen the impact of this assessment on these businesses. But that is for a separate matter and a separate discussion. So my motion is to adopt resolution number sixteen dash four, parentheses, six A, ordering the improvement. And then I'll make a separate motion later.
Motion by Johnson, second by Demmer. Mr. Hanson, is there any, the, the one property was picked up for future expansion. Would, would we ever consider deferring that until the time that it's built?
Are you referring to the one north of?
I'm sorry, on Exion that, and I'm sorry, I forget your last name, sir.
Kennedy Scales, Paul Bergen.
Yeah, Mr. Bergen bought, he bought a second parcel for a future expansion, so it's just vacant land right now. Is there, is there ever anything that, that you would defer until they actually build? Or maybe that wouldn't even help him?
I guess the instant with, with Mr. Brandt on One Hundred and Thirteenth is that is developable when it's combined with the property that he owns next to it. But we have to look at it like he owns just that piece. So that's kind of the way we approach that. This other property along Zeon Street is developable in its current condition. Our past practice has always been to assess it.
Okay, all right. So there's no restriction to it being developed right now?
And I appreciate that too, but you know, the overall thing is, you know, with Modern Tool as well and everybody else out there, it's, it's concerned with all of us regardless.
Councilor Demmer?
So I had two things. One of them, just for my own benefit. I, I know that residents are able to stretch it out over a ten-year period and pay with an interest rate. Is that true for commercials as well?
That's, that's everybody, that's across.
While it is a very large hit, it doesn't all have to be taken in the same calendar year, which I guess stretching it out over ten years and paying interest isn't like a great prize, but at least it's not all in the same year. And then the second one was, I did read the part about curb repair. And I think I would be derelict if I didn't mention that while knocking on doors, I heard a lot about zebra curbs. And it, it should be at least brought up that we should try to make sure that our curbs do match as much as possible within the budget if we're trying to do this for the point of curb appeal. So that would be my hope that as we build it, we don't end up with those same complaints that we got last year.
Mr. Councilman?
Mr. Hammer had looked into that because I had brought that up about a year ago. And it turns out that it's going to be, it would be quite a bit more expensive to put solid new curbs in. Oh, and that was surprising how much more expensive it would be. And so that's basically, I think what they try to do is make sure that the ones that they're putting in are in need. And, and they would, if it was questionable, I think they'd put it in anyway.
I guess the biggest part was when you have a couple of feet of one color, a couple of feet of another, a couple of feet. You know, if you got one patch on a, a really long street, that's different than, well, you alternated a lot.
Yeah, that was my concern too. It was just.
When you leave tonight, drive around the parking lot out here?
I know, I know.
That's how it was done because we figured out?
I figured I had to bring it up.
Councilmember Demmer, I would say though, since Tim and I have been here, we've been trying to, those short pieces, we've been trying to make into a fifteen-foot section. So we've been trying to do more of that. But it is more expensive because you have to think about all of the other impacts that, all of the curb replacement. Zeon Street will get completely new curb on both sides of the street due to the water main replacement, as well as Mississippi Boulevard. And the other streets where we're doing that holistic, complete water main replacement.
We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Okay, and that motion carries. Councilor Clint opposed. Councilor Johnson?
I'll make a motion to adopt resolution number sixteen dash four, parentheses, eight, approving plans and specifications and ordering advertisement for bids.
Sir. Motion by Johnson, second by Wells. Discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
That motion carries. Councilor Clint opposed. All right. Item twelve, Senator Resolution Number Fifteen dash twenty-nine, awarding contract for two thousand sixteen park redevelopment and approved construction administration contract and direct purchases. We're looking at concept plans prepared by Kim Lee Horn for Delta, Mason, Pheasant Ridge and Woodcrest Parks. And Mr. Hammer, do you want to, you've got, we've got a couple of alternatives we need to look at in here.
Yes, and since I almost wrote the great novel for your memo, I'll try to keep it short as far as the presentation. From a budgeting perspective, we had one point four million for four separate projects. We decided to combine them to take advantage of quantities of scale. So looking at the total project costs, we did only have three bidders on the site improvements. And the bids ranged from eight hundred and fifty-six thousand up to one point three million. The engineer's estimate was one hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars. So Custom Builders, Inc. was the low bidder. They've successfully completed similar projects, so staff would recommend award of the site improvements components. And that's the attachments to your case, to your memo. So it's trails, structures, those sort of improvements. Separate from that, we have three direct purchase or direct contracts with city staff or with the city. One being with St. Croix Recreation to do playground structures. And I, I didn't have anything to attach to your structures, but I do have boards if you would have some interest in what those look like. And we can get to that if, if you have that request. Basically, what we did under this is we showed them the size of the container they would have. We gave them a budget by which they would work with and allowed them to be creative in what types of components. We gave them some indication, say for Pheasant Ridge, it's more of a natural park, try to maintain that integrity. Delta, more of a neighborhood, there's some athletic component to that. So give the kids something to play on while the parents are watching games and practices. And then also with Mason, more of a, um, natural feel to that. So I, I will show you those in just one second. So when it came down to costs, that really wasn't a consideration. So these items were brought to the, I don't know if we're going to get them on TV anywhere, but I can certainly lay them out to the council.
Steve's in the back room cranking cameras around, I'm sure, right now.
He did a perfect job.
So St. Croix Rec kind of met the intent of what was there. I think Delta Park, there was a little bit of concern with the flashiness of the color and how that might be received. So we did meet with that rep earlier today and we kind of looked at going to more of that natural greens and, and kind of what you see in some of the other parks to try to mask it a little bit. Delta doesn't also have a lot of tree coverage there, so we looked at some sort of umbrellas or canopies to provide that. That's why it's, it's shown the way it is. So Park and Rec Commission evaluated independently. City staff evaluated independently and both of them came to the same conclusion. Within this two hundred thousand dollar budget, you might have one group that said, I want to put more money into Pheasant Ridge, for example, and another one that's going to put more into Delta. So you couldn't go say, well, I like that one from Northland and I like that one because then you kind of lose the budget. So what we wanted to do is get a good handle on overall integrity, aesthetics, what we had asked for. And then if we liked, I believe there's that two-person swing that we've commented on. So in Mason Park, I believe we're going to replace the handicap swing with that component and that's not going to affect the budget. So looking at different colors and different components and, and kind of negotiating with that contractor, that's what we decided to do. So we are recommending St. Croix Recreation receive that contract in the amount of two hundred thousand. There was also native prairie plantings in each of the parks. We went out independently versus having a general contractor find somebody giving us a markup. So we went out to one, two, three separate companies on that and Minnesota Native Landscapes. Not only was the, the least expensive from the initial install, so what we're looking for is initial install, a three-year warranty on it to ensure that it goes on. And so with that becomes their maintenance. And there's also costs to maybe come back and water if indeed we can't work with them and have our own crews do that. So the long-term costs of that also were cheaper under their bid. So we are recommending Minnesota Native Landscapes in the amount of nineteen thousand seven hundred. Then there was the restroom issue. And that one is at Woodcrest Park, there's an existing warming house. And we estimated cost to improve that in the sixty thousand plus range to bring it into ADA compliance, re-roof it, bring in the GFI electricity. And so we, we estimated getting a precast restroom structure similar to what you see in, say, some, some parks out there. And I can bring over and put this one on the overhead and talk a little bit about it. So we had five different companies submit proposals on this one. Again, there's some aesthetic integrity to what you're looking at. What, what colors is it going to be? Zoom out a little bit, help me out. So then it got down to what are the sizes, meeting ADA compliance? And this was bid as a project alternate. Could we afford to get this versus rehabbing the existing structure and make it fit within here? So we're looking at a structure that's roughly twenty feet wide by ten feet deep. There's two separate entrances for men's and women's. Both of them are ADA compliant. Stainless steel fixtures within, motion sensor, motion sensor lights or photo sensor lights. Motion sensor inside as well as the sinks. Comes with a plumbing that's already to the site and that was one of the things, that's one of the biggest costs of putting these things in is since there's already plumbing in place, let's take advantage of it. So this is going to come with flush toilets, reconfiguring the existing utilities that are onsite. So the, the bids there range from forty-nine thousand on the low end up to seventy-six thousand on the high end. Then it got into, do they meet the specifications of, of the different components that we had asked for? So UBC PreCast in the amount of forty-nine thousand one hundred and fifty dollars will provide a precast structure that meets all of the requirements that we had asked for. We may have to set a concrete pad under this, but it does come with a concrete pad at the base. So we could set it on, say, a compacted recycled asphalt or a class five, like a road base material. So all of that, again, staff would recommend that we award that amount, that PO for forty-nine one fifty to UBC PreCast. So looking at all of these costs and considering there are four alternates under the site improvements. And I'm going to go back and sit down because I don't have anything else to show you up here. But there are four alternates under the site plan. One being the trail along One Hundred and Nineteenth Avenue. And that's taking it from the Wedgewood Trail over to Pheasant Ridge Park. There's an existing sidewalk there. We talked about it, kind of as we led up to the fact of, do we want to replace a sidewalk with a trail? It's in people's backyards, it's outside of fences, it'll affect Boulevard width. The sidewalk is in good shape. We can certainly look at replacing panels. But for the cost of that alternate, we could always do that as a roadway improvement when we come back on that road. So to take out a perfectly good sidewalk to put in a trail doesn't seem like it really makes a lot of sense to do that. And I'm sorry, that's, that's alternate two. I apologize. Alternate one is one that we are recommending. That's the one in Pheasant Ridge Park that goes east out into the Disc Golf area. Kind of follows an existing access road that gets us back to our utilities back there in the pond. Opens that space up and connects the neighborhood to the south over near Olive and One Hundred and Third. So we think that is a good trail. It's going to open up access to the Disc Golf, maybe get some ADA play with part of that component. So we really think that's a good price and a good deal to get that trail. So we are recommending alternate one. Alternate two, as I mentioned, I'm sorry, alternate three, now that I'm actually reading my memo. Alternate three is One Hundred and Nineteenth Avenue in the amount of twenty-four thousand five hundred, perfectly good sidewalk. Alternate two is that extension down from One Hundred and Nineteenth to the, the park component of Pheasant Ridge Park. And that one again, has an existing sidewalk there. It's in good shape. We could handle that with a future reconstruction if that's what we should decide. Maybe we do some spot replacements of those panels if there are any damage to those. But alternates two and three, I think we've got in hand or we could handle as part of a reconstruction. Alternate four is to give us kind of a pull-off in front of Pheasant Ridge. Currently, there's no parking anywhere for this park. So you are allowed to park on Pheasant Ridge Drive, but pulling up as a handicap person and trying to get in and out of your vehicle on a shoulder that's eight foot wide gets to be a little problematic. So we propose to kind of put a little bump out there and create two stalls. That again, certainly could be done as part of a reconstruction project, but we're several years out before this road is done. That's something that could be taken advantage of now. It's a very reasonable cost to do that. So staff's recommendation there is to accept alternates one and four. So now, when I combine site improvements with alternates one and four, St. Croix Rec, UBC PreCast and Minnesota Native Landscapes, I have a total construction cost of a little over one point one million dollars, one point one two five. When I add to that the wetland credits for the overlook, we have to purchase about a thousand dollars in wetland credits for the overlooks at Pheasant Ridge. We have to do a delineation next spring for the Disc Golf component and that's also part of a separate motion here. We spent seventy-seven hundred on Geotech adding in design and inspections and still holding that placeholder for the Disc Golf baskets and other components. When I add all that in, along with permit costs, we're up to about one point three four two million. The project budget for this was one point four million. Even if we wanted to do two and three as alternates, we could afford it. But again, I think we have something that's there. So being under the budget, staff comes forward with the recommendations to Custom Builders in the amount, and I think I did the math, in the amount of eight hundred and ten thousand five hundred twenty-three dollars and fifty cents. Purchase order with St. Croix Recreation in the amount of two hundred thousand. Purchase order with UBC PreCast in the amount of forty-nine thousand one fifty. And a purchase order with Minnesota Native Landscapes in the amount of nineteen thousand seven hundred. and a purchase order with Minnesota Native Landscapes in the amount of 19,700. That was a lot and it wasn't the reader's digest, I apologize and I'll stand for questions.
Your Honor.
Counselor Manning.
I'm going to move adoption resolution number 15 dash 20 sub nine, warning contract for 2016 park redevelopment and approved construction administration contract and direct purchases. I don't need to read them since Mr. Hammer does such a great job of explaining them, I'm guessing.
Second.
Motion by Manning and a second by Clint. Um, was that clear enough on the motions? Okay, good.
Are you taking alternates one and four as recommended in your motion?
Correct.
Okay.
Which means we will have to amend the resolution because that had the full amount in there, so we will have to.
He said 810,000, I thought that was.
But the resolution that's attached to the case is for the full 856, 815. Because we weren't sure what you were gonna select or not, so we did it for the total amount. We'll have to amend the resolution that's attached to the case.
Let me, let me just read these in. My motion includes the award of the contract to custom builders, the amount of 810,523.50. Also includes authorizing staff to execute construction administration and wetland delineation contracts, uh, letters of engagement with, uh, Kimberly Horn in the amount of 122,795 dollars. And it also includes authorizing staff to issue purchase orders for the, uh, three, um, mentioned direct purchases. Clear enough?
And that the resolution will be modified accordingly.
And that the resolution will be modified accordingly.
So your second? Okay, so motion by Manning, second by Clint, Counselor Denver.
Did you have a comment first?
Oh, go ahead, Counselor.
I really, really like the fact that, um, that playground with the canopies to get some of the sun out is an excellent idea. I mean, so many of our playgrounds, it just drives me nuts that there's no shade when you're going down the slide. And my second question that goes along with that, when they go out and build that, do they stop and like, look at the hottest time of the day and like, make sure the slides aren't facing the sun during that time? Do they do things like that or do they just plop it down there?
Uh, I think what they do, Councilmember Clint, is look at the space provided. And what we've said is, if you need a little more space, we can, you know, if you want a peanut shape versus an oval, we can do that. Um, so there is a little bit of flexibility, but I, I don't know that they go to, you know, tracking the sun and orienting the slot. We could certainly talk to them about doing that, I think that's a great idea, but I wouldn't, I wouldn't guess that that's something that they would do.
Will you ask them to think about it? Because it's really hard with the little kids to go down those slides.
That's a great idea, orienting it to the north and the east rather than that hot slap on the back of the legs, yeah.
More park, it's right sun all afternoon.
Your Honor.
Uh, oh, go ahead.
Just one question, do they even make a good old-fashioned teeter totter anymore?
Councilmember Manning, I haven't seen them. But there's a whole lot of spinny things and there are bouncy things, but I have not seen a good old-fashioned teeter totter. I do like the merry-go-rounds.
One that's pretty close at Lyons Park.
There's Lyons Park, yeah. There's some cool teeter totters.
You could bring a lot.
Go to Lyons Park.
All right, so I have a couple of questions. Um, I think we, uh, just suggested the alternate for handicap parking for Pheasant Ridge. I think you also mentioned taking out the handicap swing at Pheasant Ridge to put in the two-seat swing?
Mason.
No, okay, good. All right, so the picture there shows a handicap accessible swing and handicap accessible parking in the same park, that
Yes.
makes a lot of sense. Um, the, the numbers you were talking about on the precast restroom versus fixing the old one, they were kind of in the same ballpark. Um, so if they're gonna be in that same ballpark, then I guess I, I would be curious if there's any difference in the lifetime costs. I, I don't know if precast buildings survive as well as concrete bunkers, which is what we have there now. Um, so if the lifetime cost swung it one way or the other, uh, if they're the same general price to build, I'd, I'd go with whichever one had the lower lifetime cost. Uh, because like you said, the, the, around 60,000 to update the old one and between 50 and 70 to buy a new one. So just something to consider as you're going forward. I, I think it's great that we have running water, we should use it. Um, especially since Woodcrest isn't getting the fancy new playground equipment. I think, uh, running water bathrooms is a nice consolation prize.
What are you looking for?
So I have a question to tie onto that. How large is that bunker building that's there now? Because what we're looking at, the footprint of this is 167 square feet. I mean, it's not a very, you know, the, the dimensions that are on here are, you know, the outside of the roof line. Well, you gotta come in for your walls and by the time you get down to the foot, we're 167 square feet for that building. And it just doesn't seem, how big is the one that was, that's there now?
The one that's there has like a storage area in it too, so it's gotta be bigger.
Yeah, the one that's there is, is approximately 400 square feet. It has storage, it also had the warming house component for the ice rinks, but the ice rinks are, are no longer there. So you're looking at, uh, more than double the footprint, which then goes to the energy piece of that. And, and I think we were in that 60 to 65,000 range. This precast puts us about 15,000 dollars under that. And I think when we talked last time and I did a little analysis of the cost benefit of going with, say, a BIF, because if, if we came back with the same cost, um, to retrofit or just look at, say, uh, portable shelters or portable bathrooms and just having a dividing wall. So we looked at kind of building a small structure around it or divide it to screen it. And that was in about the 9500 dollar range. So it cost us about 9500 dollars to screen a BIF. Um, and then looking at the time you're out there, absent, say, any vandalism or graffiti or any of those things, it would cost us about 1600 dollars a year to maintain, uh, the BIF-type scenario in that structure, plus about 9500 upfront. Um, so then we go to a 49,000 dollar precast structure and that would take us to about 650 dollars a month. So it's almost a thousand dollars a month from a maintenance standpoint. Um, so you project that out 50 years into this precast. I didn't look at the existing structure because the costs were already higher and trying to heat that type of a structure, um, double the size, I inferred to myself that it's gonna cost you extra to heat space that you're not gonna use when bathrooms really are, are what we were looking for.
I just wasn't sure because it's the precast CMU that maybe it is more energy efficient as solar loading and all that stuff. So I wasn't sure if the bigger space equaled that out or, or not, so.
And it's, it's not a heated environment, the precast structure is not. It's just, it's gonna have electricity, it's gonna have water and it's gonna have sewer. There is no HVAC, no, no heated component to that. So tho- those costs go out the window. I mean, there is.
What do we do in the winter with it?
The same thing that's done in every other, um, state park or, or any other project is it'll be open as it's being used. Um, Disc Golf probably will take advantage of that, but aside from that, I don't, there's no sliding hills, there's no winter usage of that. Um, it'll be available and open during certain times of the day. Um, but from a cost of energy savings, um, there would be no cost for that component.
Would've heated the other one if we'd used the existing one or?
It's already has a component, we just have to update it. We'd have to bring it into compliance.
You could get one you could use all year for slightly more than one, you can use half the year.
I guess I would, I would question the use of that on a year-round basis, um, when you're only really using the bathroom component. It's not a heated storage and it's not a heated warming house for outdoor play because the park is not used for that component.
But the playground is used most of the year if you don't have a really cold year, right?
Or snow, because we don't clear those areas off.
Yeah, okay. That's a tougher call.
Well, it kinda makes you wonder why, you know, the only reason we're looking at it is because it already has running water there. Otherwise, we've got all these other parks that don't have bathroom amenities. And you just kinda question the wisdom of, if that makes sense or not. Or if that's gonna be more of a vandalism problem or more, more of a nuisance than it's worth down the road.
I personally, you know, having young kids at that park, it's half a mile away from the house, have made numerous very fast runs to back the house. I, I think we should do more to have restroom facilities at our parks for the people using them. Um, I understand there's a risk of vandalism and I, I understand all that, but you know, the, the playgrounds do get used in the winter. I mean, I know they're not like sledding hill level of use, but they're, they're used day-to-day by the people in the neighborhood as long as it's not one of the super cold days, and we have plenty of 40-degree days. So if it's not a whole lot more and you can use it most of the year, I, I would think it's worth a little bit extra. Now, it's not worth twice as much necessarily, but if it's in that range and, I don't know, I, I would support that.
Counselor Manning.
Did any say that it would cost a thousand dollars a month?
That was the BIF versus the precast, and I think that was a thousand a year.
And that was just from going out, replacing the toilet paper, doing those sort of things and doing, uh, periodic inspections. Um, that didn't include any energy because under the BIF component, you wouldn't be paying. And I guess I could work with Sharon to figure out what the energy costs for that structure are, it's going to be metered. So that, that's, we can look back at what was the cost for that structure. I guess I wouldn't look back to last year, the year before, um, but maybe a few years prior when it was actually getting a, a little more use.
Are you saying then that you're just in favor of just the bathrooms?
Uh, I, I definitely would prefer the precast or the existing over BIFs if we have the plumbing already built. But the, the comparison between the precast and the existing was the one I didn't hear.
Your Honor.
Counselor Clint.
I have a question, you know, if you put BIFs out there, they're not necessarily designated men's and women's. I mean, when it's open, you're going. Why do we have to have, you know, two separate ones for men's and women's? You can't just make one handicap accessible so it's bigger bathroom?
You certainly could do that, that's an option. You could get, you could get it in any size or shape or configuration you'd want.
And would that be cheaper?
Uh, we didn't, I, I'm sure it would be, but we didn't, we didn't look at that option. Um, we wanted to keep them separate.
For what purpose?
Depending on the usage, having two bathrooms to be utilized versus one.
Can they be two bathrooms and open the both?
You could just put unisex signs on them and it wouldn't, it wouldn't be figured for one sex or the other.
I just don't know why that's not done.
Yeah, the unisex sign costs a lot more than that.
Exactly, just don't put any sign on the toilet splash.
So this, and this, um, the Woodcrest portion of this is a, it's a standalone, right? I mean, we're, so we're, um, if you, if you're all comfortable, then let's move forward. If you think that we should talk about this further, I'm fine with that too.
It's TBD, so I'm fine with it, I just wanted to make sure that, I mean, at some point, we're gonna have to decide on what's actually in there, so. But for everything else, I, let's go.
We have a motion and we have a second. Um, any other discussion?
One, one point of clarification, Mr. Mayor, is around that precast structure. Are we looking to award to UBC for 49,150 or is there still some questioning of getting additional information? I mean, there's nothing that says we have to award that here today. Um, and I guess I'm just, I wanna make sure because so far the motion was to do that. And I, I want, it didn't seem like that's really where the conversation was going, so I wanted to.
So, so the motion is the precast, this TBD, we've already moved past that and put it into the motion. So do you want it in the motion or do you want to?
It's in the motion, if he doesn't like it.
If you think it's.
I was giving a little deference, it's his ward and he lives there and, you know.
Yeah, I'd just like to see us get back to putting bathrooms in the parks, that's my major point.
Okay, well, this is gonna do that.
Great.
So, Mr. Hammer, I had a quick question. So, um, have we worked with custom builders before? Do we have experience with them?
Uh, I have experience with the owner of custom builders. He, I built the park with him in a different community in the past. Uh, he was with a different company at that time. Uh, I did check on his references, they did some work in Sartell and as well as in Hopkins and heard favorable reviews. So I'm, I'm familiar with the owner and the project manager. Uh, but beyond that, I guess I, I can't speak for their reputation. They've been in business for a sh- three or four years, I believe it is. Uh, but I did check into some of their, uh, references of a, of a comparable type of pro- project. I think they built the, some of the fishing piers over in Anoka as well, off the backside of City Hall, as part of that park area. Um, so they do all kinds of different custom, uh, parks as well as structures and other types of things. So I, I've heard favorable reviews.
Peterson's just tired of us?
I asked him that question and, um, apparently they have a full docket already.
All right. All right, motion and a second, any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, and that motion carries. That was dash five, right? So are we on item 14 now? Is there introduction? They're all on the same page, okay. I have so many notes on my agenda that I don't even know where I'm at anymore.
13.
Are we on 13? All right, thank you. Consider adopting resolution 16 dash five sub eight, approving plans and specs and ordering advertisement for bids for project 16 dash five. And this is a continuation of our street maintenance program. And in 2016, we'll be working with Andover, Anoka, Brooklyn Center, Circle Pines, Columbia Heights, Coon Rapids, East Bethel, Fridley, Ham Lake and Mata Medai. Uh, this program offers street maintenance, material items and services that include seal coating, pavement, uh, I'm sorry, pavement markings, street sweeping, crack sealing and fog sealing. Uh, the city of Coon Rapids will participate in seal coating of 16.2 miles of streets and 41 cul-de-sacs, pavement markings, spring and fall street sweeping, seal coating of Prairie Oaks and Thorpe Park parking lots and fog sealing trails in Woodview Park.
Your Honor.
Counselor Clint.
I move adoption resolution number 16 dash five sub eight.
Second.
Motion by Clint, second by Wells. I have a quick question on that Prairie Oaks Park. Um, we had a neighborhood meeting in the park, I think there last year, and would there, am I mistaken? There wasn't a parking spot for a handicap? Where, because it seemed to me that Greg Cronin and I were talking about that out there, that there wasn't a spot for a handicap there.
And if I remember as well, Mr. Mayor, I believe there was either a sign but no painting or painting and no sign. And so when, once we're done rehabbing this, well, it'll be, it'll be repainted. And if, um, we will make accommodations for a handicap stall and paint it and stripe it so there's consistency.
Thank you.
Your Honor.
Counselor Manning.
Do you have any idea of, uh, approximate idea of what percentage we save by doing the joint powers agreement?
Councilmember Manning, I suppose it's time that I look back at and review. And maybe what I'll do is I'll reach out to some of my other communities. But, um, I know that some company or some cities have, um, tried to shy away from joining into this group until they see what the unit prices are. And then they say, well, we'd rather come and join with you than try to administer it on its own. So there must be enough of a savings to keep getting people to come back. I haven't checked it since I first got here, um, but it was on the magnitude of about six to eight percent, um, on a unit price cost across the board. Um, but every community is different, you know? We do quite a bit of, of seal coating, others stick only to the street sweeping. So, um, on a unit cost basis, uh, depending on how much more we get, we're kind of in the six to eight percent range.
I'm sure the smaller ones are benefiting far more than we are because we already kinda have an economy of scale here with our 200 and some miles of streets.
Yes.
We have motion and a second, right? Any other discussion on this? Mr. Hammer, what is fog sealing? I'm sorry, what is fog sealing?
Fog, well, chip sealing is when you put down the oil and you put down the rock and then you kinda roll over it. Fog sealing is more of a spray-on application, it's a little more tacky. Um, it, it allows you to get on that surface a little bit faster, um, but it also is a little more tacky type of a surface. So it, it, it's just another way to seal coat it without having a dual process. It's kind of a one, one spray process.
Tachyazin sticking together, not tackyazin.
Adhesiveness.
Ooh, it must've gone past nine o'clock. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, and that motion carries. And now we are on to item fif- uh, 14. Uh, consider introduction of an ordinance adding requirements for micro distilleries, brew pubs and brewer taprooms. Um, in order to allow for the licensing of micro distilleries, brew pubs and brewer taprooms, it is necessary to make amendments to chapter 5 dash 200, the city's alcoholic beverage licensing code. The ordinance attached will allow for micro distilleries, brew pubs and brewer taprooms. In addition, staff has included a revision to Sunday sales to allow for the recently amended state law that allows Sunday on-sale license holders to begin serving at 8:00 AM. The city's code currently requires that sales start at 10:00. Does anybody have any questions about this before we introduce it? any questions about this before we introduce it? No questions? All right. Well, then, with that, we will consider this ordinance introduced.
You guys win the prize.
Wonderful. If you were at the workshop, everybody, it was like, okay, just, what do we have to do? Just check the box. Let's go. Item 15, consider 2015 and 2016 insurance renewals. And it looks like the one conversation that really is gonna come out of this again will be the no-fault sewer backup coverage. And we carried this coverage from 2002 through 2010, declined it in 2011 and 2012. The city council requested that the city carry the insurance starting again in 2013 and '14, and it cost $15,340. The cost for 2016 for similar insurance would cost $15,349. No-fault sewer backup coverage would supplement an owner's, a homeowner's personal insurance up to $10,000 per sewer backup claim, no matter who was at fault. Without the added coverage, the city's insurance would only cover the claim if it were determined by the city's negligence that caused the backup. Staff has recommended that the city not purchase this coverage in the past. In 2015, the city paid $32,754 for claims under the sewer no-fault coverage. And were those determined to be our fault, or, or don't we even make that determination if we have the coverage?
Mayor and council, those claims, the $32,754, would not have been our fault. We would not have paid, but we had the no-fault coverage, so we did. So, the regular insurance backups, if they're our fault, are covered under our own, our regular liability insurance. It's just the ones that aren't our fault that this covers.
And, and it's determined to not be our fault if we are properly checking and regularly maintaining the systems, even though it's still our system that could fail, that's gonna create the sewer backup?
Yeah, somebody may have put something in the lines, like diapers, or rags, or grease, or something like that. And if we're regularly checking that line, we've done what we can to prevent it. We can't control that, so it's not our fault.
Your Honor?
Councilman Manning?
I'm still, I still wanna keep this. However, I still think it's preposterous that we have to pay $15,000 just for the right to pay people $10,000 for something that's basically not their fault either.
Right.
And it, to me, it's, you know, okay, technically, it wasn't our fault, and ended up paying $30,000, I assume, to three different, $10,000 for three different, or-
No, there was, I think there were, I don't remember the number, but I think there was probably about five of them. So, some were small.
But for those people, that's probably, that's a big thing. And, and if you look at it from the perspective that they're saying, and probably they're right, that it wasn't their fault, but technically, it wasn't the city's fault, I still say it's, to be fair, we need to do this.
Your Honor?
Councilor Clint?
I'm just wondering, when it comes down to, like, a couple, was it last year, the year before, we had a big issue with us doing some road work, like, maybe it's blocks away, and yet, another street might get a sewer backup, and they claim it's because of work we were doing in the area. Who makes the determination if it's our fault or not? Do we, or does the league?
The league's claims adjusters would look at it.
Okay. So, it's, it's not by us?
It's not, it's not us. No, it's not city staff. It's gonna be the league's claims adjusters. And then, of course, if people don't like that opinion, if we denied coverage, you know, and they wanted to pursue it legally, they could, which, you know, has happened in the past, but not real often.
Your Honor?
Councilman Manning?
Just a reminder, too, for the people that are watching out there, that even if we do have this coverage, it only goes up to $10,000, and repairs on things like this can cost much, much more than that. So, they should contact their insurance company to flood backup insurance, because I don't wanna invite you to be confused to think that because we have this insurance that it's gonna cover their entire costs of this.
Can you also tell me, compared to other cities, do many cities have this, or do most cities not have this?
Well, if you remember, I provided a list last year. You know, we went through this conversation about the cost of it, that the league has to administer it. And I provided the list, and most of the cities that were getting it were smaller outstate cities. There were a few in the metro area, but there were not many. It's not the norm for the metropolitan cities to buy this.
Councilor Demmer?
So, I've lost sleep over some of the votes we've had in the past. I've never lost sleep over giving people sewer insurance. So, unless someone waves frantically in the next second, I'm gonna propose a motion. All right, so-
Go ahead, Councilor.
Sorry. I move to, oh, wait, this is just consider, isn't it? So, I, I would like to direct the staff on adopting resolution 16-33, purchasing sewer backup liability insurance, along with staff, the recommendations for the other purchasing insurance through LMCIT with $50,000 deductible up to annual aggregate of $200,000, and maintaining statutory legal limits of 1.5 million per occurrence.
Second.
So, we have a motion by Demmer and a second by Geisler, and it includes adopting resolution 16-33, purchasing the sewer backup liability insurance. And everything else. I just wanted to make sure that we repeated that. Discussion?
Your Honor?
Councilor Clint?
I'm just gonna say, I'm gonna vote no for the whole thing, obviously, because I think most of it's good, but I'm still gonna vote no.
Thank you. And, and I think because residents can't go and buy their sewer service from any other provider, even if we're in the clear because we've done our inspections, if our sewer line backs up into their house, I don't ever wanna look at them and go, hey, it's not our fault. You know, it's, it's a ridiculous, it, it seems ridiculous how this is put out here, but if the only way we can get the adjuster to look at it, or to do any coverage at all, I guess I'm, I'm gonna support the $15,000. Any other discussion? I'll be quiet. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
All right, that motion carries. Councilor Clint, opposed. That's all I've got. We're on to council. Um, wait a minute, no, we're on to open mic. Yes, yes. Does anybody here for open mic this evening? All right, awesome. Open mic provides an opportunity for the public to address the city council on subjects that are not part of the regular meeting agenda. The public is invited to express any concerns they may have, which are relevant to the affairs, policies, or practices of the city of Coon Rapids. Remarks will be limited to three minutes. And if you wish to participate, please approach the podium and give us your name and address before addressing the council, and then all the remarks will be made from the podium and addressed to the council.
Good evening, guys. Do meetings always go this long?
No.
No, for a long time.
Brad Sanford. I live at 11826 Palisade Street Northeast in Blaine. What I'm doing here is to inform you that I am seeking the Republican endorsement for Senate District 37 for state senator. I'm a graduate of Blaine High School. I'm also a 30-year Anoka County resident. I have a wife and four kids. We live in Blaine, obviously. Three in college, one is still in Spring Lake Park school system. I'm a business banker by trade, and so, one of the unique perspectives that I bring to the laws that are being put into place is that I will understand, through the people that I've worked with, how a law will affect the business, how it will affect the industry, and how it will affect us as consumers. And I think that's quite important today, because we need to start holding our governments to the right priorities, and hold them to things that they need to take care of us. And so, with that, I'm here to announce that I'm stepping up. Democracy needs participation by us as citizens, and that's what I'm doing. So, thank you for your time. Great meeting.
Well, you barely nicked that three minutes.
Gotta keep it short and sweet.
Thank you for stopping in. Is anybody else here for open mic this evening? All right. Then with that, we will, we have no reports for previous open mics, so we are on to other business. Oh, come on, there's gotta be something. Lot of shuffling. Mr. Stemwell, anybody you'd care to introduce to the, introduce to us?
Sure. We've got a new employee who just started last week. Her name's Maria. She's the new assistant to the city manager. She's back in the corner over there. So, after the meeting's over, I'll, we'll walk up and formally introduce her to everybody, so.
Excellent. So, we have a new assistant to the city manager.
Correct.
Okay, welcome. And if you haven't caught it yet, there's an awesome commercial from the school she went to that plays out pretty well.
Thank you.
Councilman Manning?
I just wanna mention this, and I know Steve, you're watching. Last week, it was Councilmember Clint's screen that wasn't getting everybody on. This week, it's mine. And I'm just wondering if you're giving each one of us a turn. Mine be a full screen next week.
Your Honor?
Also, Johnson?
I, I just wanted to say something, because Coon Rapids lost a really good one recently, and Leo Foley passed away. And for those of you that might not have known Leo personally, he was a law enforcement officer with the State Patrol for over 30 years, then became an assistant county attorney in the Anoka County Attorney's Office, worked with legislature for many years, and was just a wonderful public servant to the state of Minnesota and to Coon Rapids, and a wonderful person. I, I had the privilege of being able to talk to Mr. Foley about many things, and he gave me good advice along the way. And his idea, apparently, of retirement from law enforcement was to become an assistant county attorney and then to keep, keep on working. Are you gonna live up to that example?
Too many lawyers in the world, all right.
So, I, I, to his, to his friends and family, I just wanna say thank you for letting him bless our city with his talents. Thank you.
Other business? Oh. Chiefwise, kudos to the police department, and the article in there for HeartSafe Coon Rapids and Officer Plots, and all that you allow him to do, spreading the goodwill of HeartSafe and putting Coon Rapids in a good light in the paper. That was an awesome article.
Well, actually, Mr. Mayor, if I could add, is that later this week, Officer Plots is leaving, actually, I think over the weekend, for England to start a HeartSafe program in a different country. So, he's a bundle of energy, for sure.
Did he run out of cities here?
He's, uh, he sought after, so somebody from England saw him speak and invited him, so they're paying for him to go over to England, and he's starting a HeartSafe program. And I'm forgetting the name of the town. It's-
It's like Worcester.
Worchester, England, is where he's going, and they're treating him like a VIP, I guess. So, it's quite an honor.
Hope he can adjust back when he gets back.
Well, and he's gonna be flying the Coon Rapids colors while he's there, so he's gonna talk highly of our city, and he has his marching orders to, to do so.
Must be that British accent.
Would you find out if he needs anybody to go with to follow?
Carry his luggage, maybe, or something. All right. Anything else to come before council this evening?
Move to adjourn.
Mr. Johnson, second by Wells. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Adjourn.
Maria's never coming back.